Good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock on Monday, the 27th of January 2025. My name is Mitch Cohen, and I am the Chair of the North Bros Select Board. Now, we'll call us to order. We are being recorded. There's no opening announcements because we're all here in person. And first thing on our agenda, as always, is public comment. However, I have not yet joined the Zoom. So I need to get onto the Zoom and see if we have any people remotely. This way. I apologize for doing this a little late. Is there anyone in the audience that is here for anything other than the agenda that they wish to comment on? Raise your hand. I'll be happy to recognize you. And if you're remote, we'll do that in just a moment. But I'm gonna press some buttons to get me on there. Go back here and make me a panelist.
Do you want me to do something, Mitch?
Fun things the Chair gets to do. All right, is there anyone remote that wishes to speak under public comment? I'll be happy to recognize you. Going once, going twice. All right, we'll declare public comment is closed. And next up on our agenda, we have some meeting minutes of the 13th of January 2025. I am very excited that we're staying up to date with our meeting minutes. I know, I think it was Julianne and Lisa, sent in some comments for amendments for the meeting minutes to Linda earlier today. And they are before us, printed copy. They were also emailed out to everyone. Just some minor changes and typos sorted out. I certainly don't see any concerns. If there is somebody would like to make a motion or has anything else to say on those meeting minutes?
I'd be happy to make the motion.
Okay.
I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes from January 13th, 2025, as amended.
Second.
Okay, and those amendments are time stamped, January 27th, 2025, at 3:15 PM. Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Mike. Any discussion, comments, anything else? All those in favor?
Can I abstain, just because I hadn't had a taste? I'm so sorry, I wasn't online today. But yeah, I'm gonna abstain, but thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. So four in favor, one abstention?
Yeah, thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have a public hearing. I will open the public hearing to consider an application for a new general on-premise wine and malt beverage license as submitted by Tugus Farm LLC for premises located at 234 Ball Street. Applicants, why don't you come forward? We'll start by two of you introducing yourselves. Give us a quick summary of what you're looking to do. I know we anticipated this from discussions last summer. And then we'll go over some of the procedural stuff. And then we'll seek anyone who wishes to speak on the application.
Hello, I'm Andre Tugus from Tugus Family Farm, second generation farmer. I live at 112 Ball Street.
And I am Carrie Ward. I am one of the managers on the farm. And we are seeking our general premise liquor license. In the past, we've had a series of special day permits, but we are trying to take the next step and just go with the state-approved license.
So this would allow you to serve wine and beer essentially at any time, as opposed to getting the single-day licenses that you've had in the past?
Correct, yes. Before, we just had just a weekend-only special permits, a series of rain dates and whatnot. So we're just hoping to add this to our business.
Great. Are there any questions from the board?
So first of all, I really appreciate the farm and all that you guys are doing to remain relevant in the community. And I want nothing but your success and to thrive. So first of all, thanks for all you're doing, and I appreciate that. I saw the hours that were proposed. Can you remind me what the current hours are and how different this will be compared to what your current hours are?
Sure. The hours, I believe, I put was 11 to 8. For the most part, we are open until 5 o'clock-ish. We have been trying to do extended ice cream hours on Fridays and Saturdays. So those would potentially be the two days where we were looking to maybe serve later. We were trying, I was trying to in the application kind of do the widest range of hours and the buildings and facilities, just so that if approval, we'd be kind of covered without...
Without having to come back again for...
Yeah. So those were the hours that I put mostly just for that Friday and Saturday. But for the most part, we were serving 11 to 4-ish at the... That was for the majority. But that 8 o'clock hours would cover us if we did that extended ice cream hours on Fridays and Saturdays.
And then with the special events that you've been doing, how has the traffic been? Has there been like a significant impact from traffic perspectives?
No, it's been no different than the regular pick-your-own traffic.
Which is a lot.
I mean, it can be, but we're definitely very cautious of making sure that we're not backing up traffic on the street, ever.
Yep.
Entering the farm and giving people alternative exits for leaving the farm.
Yep.
But I don't think this would ever affect the amount of traffic on the streets. It's catering to the customers that are already on the farm.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we did have, two years ago, unfortunately, we did have entire crop losses of our cherries and peaches. So by having the special permits and license, it enabled us to kind of put together some events to still try to drop people into the farm, even if we didn't have the crops, per se. So maybe that was a little different than the pick-your-own, but we're really looking as to complement what we already offer on the farm.
Thank you.
Comments? Lisa?
Okay. If, I'm looking at 11 to 8, which I know you're trying to expand it so that you can have a full possibility of not having to come back. It's kind of a different audience when you're going to 8, right? It wasn't just your ice cream audience, it's more adults?
Well, we didn't, I mean, this past year, we didn't have, we never actually served that late. So mostly it was people coming for ice cream. We didn't offer the alcohol this past year during those hours. So I wasn't really sure how much of a draw that would be. I was just trying to put the broadest hours to cover if we still do those late hours.
Okay. But again, if you're doing later hours, it's going to be more for adults, obviously.
Yeah, it was a lot of families, I guess, a lot of like after dinner.
And it also allows us to do farm-to-table dinners, which is definitely a trend in the industry.
Yes.
So if you're only serving till 4 o'clock, it's definitely, there's no possibility of doing a dinner.
Okay, so that's your next thing, or have you already done that?
We've done a couple, there were two that we've had on the farm. We didn't take out the application for the special permits. That was through Armsby Abbey and...
Central Masgrove.
Central Masgrove.
So we've done some dinners where other, like a restaurant, and then Central Masgrove held the licensing. Both were good events, so.
Okay, and then when you serve, you have your own little glasses and things with your logo on it and such? Like if it's, you're not, here's a bottle of wine and here's a bottle of beer. You're doing it in a cup and serving it like you would a meal?
If it was a farm-to-table dinner, yes. Primarily, what we've done, what we did this past year was cans.
Oh, you did do cans?
Yeah.
Okay.
Open cans, they have to be open.
Okay, and then do they have to make sure before they leave the property, they throw them in a wastebasket on the way out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've signed at all the exits.
Yeah, because it's kind of hard when you're like, oh, not to go.
Yeah, well, the servers open the cans when they hand it to them. No one gets an unopened can that they could walk off the farm with.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest thing was people, we don't allow alcohol in the orchard. So, I mean, we did have signs, but with, sort of in our picnic area, I do have like other managers just like keeping an eye out, making sure people aren't going into the orchard, into the parking lot. Always have trashcans like right at the points of entry where they have to get rid of the cans.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're, again, as Laura says, a great asset to the town. And it wasn't until I got my grandson that I went up to enjoy it. And then I get pies every so often.
Very good.
I'm sure you do well, and I'm glad you came in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julianne?
So if you wanted to expand the hours to say 10 o'clock, you'd have to come back for another...
I assume so.
Yeah.
Okay. Because it is a neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't...
That would be a different...
I don't foresee wanting to go that lead personally.
And it's not the focus of our business to be going that late at all. Primarily, it's going to be the 11 to 4 hours.
Yeah. We just didn't want to limit ourselves if we did get approval, and then suddenly we'd have to, again, come back or try to adjust the hours. So those hours kind of covered like what I saw as what we would be doing. Even if it was a dinner, I don't think it would go late. I mean, we don't really have a lot of lights and stuff to be open at night, anyway.
Yeah, we obviously have longer days in the summer to be able to do it, but not past sunset.
Mike?
Thanks. Question, the certification the staff goes through, is that similar to like bar/restaurant staff?
Tip certification.
Yes.
Certification?
So there was a general, there's a few different ones, but this is like a general on-premise serving versus like a liquor store, which is like takeaway alcohol. So, and I've done, there's the one, like same one restaurants do, and then there is one for like concessions that I've done, which kind of deals with like, kind of like larger-volume people. They're pretty similar, but both of those trainings, staff has to go through to serve.
Sure, okay, great. And I like the idea of limiting two drinks at a time. And then the wristbands to limit total drinks per guest. Is that a moving limit, or is that based on time or a set limit that you've got in your mind now?
Well, I didn't, we, you know, because I manage sort of the people that are doing the serving, and we didn't really have to enforce. And for the most part, people are having like a beer, maybe two. You know, as staff, you kind of like remember who you're serving. But we had a system with the wristbands where if we had to limit, you could put like an X on the band so that people wouldn't get more than two. Also, in the ordering of the alcohol, I know, like, I'm very mindful of not having anything that's like crazy high percentage. I'm gonna try to keep it like 5% or something versus, you know...
Some of those IPAs will get you.
Yeah, so definitely aware of that, yeah. But for the most part, it's like people having a beer or two.
Okay, so there isn't like a set limit per guest, per visit?
We tried to keep it to two.
Tried to keep it to two. But I never really had to enforce it, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Laura?
This is going to be like an outside area again? This is not gonna, is this in a building or is it outside?
Outside.
Okay, so it's only going to be during the warmer months?
Yeah.
And will people have to get food along with the drinks? Or is there, like, what's the food?
We have food available for people. I mean, I remember during COVID, the state mandated that everyone gets...
I don't, I didn't know what to...
Yeah, you had to...
Like at Ward Hill, you'd have to buy a bag of chips.
Okay.
So, I mean, that wasn't a consideration that we had.
Just to make sure, like, people are eating enough?
Yeah.
I mean, they are on the farm, eating apples.
Fair enough.
Eating pies, eating crisps, so.
And then just my experience with like being in the building selling, like, most people aren't just buying like a drink. Like, most people are buying food. And then we did have, on the busier days, we'd open the back window. So even though we were just, we were serving drinks, we still had like roasted nuts, donuts.
Caramel apples.
Yeah, other snacks. So very rarely would I say I would just sell like a drink. Most people were buying it, like with their meal.
Those pretzels too, those giant pretzels.
Thank you, yeah.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I just want, in terms of, and this is just my thought process. So you're having people come and go. At the end of the day, do you send somebody out to clean the whole area up? Because you must have been pretty good.
Clean it continuously throughout the day.
Yeah, usually like two to three people just on.
And then we, at the end of the day, we clean, and then in the morning, we clean again. But we do a thorough cleaning in the morning before we open.
And can you recycle the cans with the goats?
No with the goats, but they do, at one of our distributors will take the cans back if we save the cans.
We do have a recycling dumpster on the farm. And we do have recycling trashcans. But I wish they'd stayed just recycling.
It's hard to manage.
It's hard to manage that.
Yeah, we recognize that for Apple Fest and other town events, yeah.
Yeah, and we even cut just the hole for the can. Still, everything else goes in.
I don't think there's anything else from the board right now. We'll have another opportunity before making decisions. I will note that we have a letter in our packet from Detective Bazzell of the Police Department, that he conducted a background check on you, Andrea's owner, and you as the, sort of the manager and operator, found nothing concerning and confirmed your tip certification. So there were no concerns from the Police Department. With that, I will open it up to anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this. I see a hand. If you could go to that podium, I see a new microphone up there. So hopefully, it'll be better than the old one. If you could state your name and street address, and let us know what's on your mind about this.
Anne Marie Robinson, 254 Ball Street. Despite the fact that the address for this is 234 Ball Street, the portion of the property that they will have this on, well, doesn't quite abut my property, it's very, very close. I can hear their roosters in the summertime. I can hear the roar of the crowd in the busy days. This is a huge change to your business. This brings a different vibe to a neighborhood. I have never objected to anything that you've done before. However, I'm concerned about this. I'm concerned that it be managed, whether you can manage it. People do get out of control once they start drinking. The street is very narrow. People like to walk on it. People who live on Ball Street walk up and down the street and after dark. One said of our neighbors frequently walks after dark, and I have to be careful to watch for them. Those are the kinds of things I'm concerned about. You know, in the fall, it will be dark at 8 o'clock. And having people who've been drinking driving up and down Ball Street after dark doesn't sound like a good idea to me, especially a lot of people.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
We, like Carrie said, we did have, throughout the fall, the last two years, we've, on the weekends, on the busiest days of the year, we did have the temporary day permits. So we've had two years of experience with it and no issues with it. So for the busiest days of the year, we've already had this. Yes, and I don't, I'm not, we're not planning on being open till 8 o'clock for serving alcohol. It's only that we can have a farm-to-table dinner or maybe serve when we're open in the summertime for the ice cream hours on the weekends. It was, we didn't want to have to come back to the board, to the selectmen, to change the license. So we're primarily focusing on the 11 to 4 hours that we've been doing the last couple of years.
Yeah, and then if we, when we did the extended hours, it was just in the summer. So it wasn't, we did it until Labor Day weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was really like June, July, August that we did the late ice cream hours. And like I said, we didn't try to add the alcohol. I was just trying to get the hours to cover if we did any special events, like the dinners, or just trying to get the hours covered if we were wanting to do it with the ice cream hours, which I'm not even sure if we're going to continue. But I hear your concerns. I mean, I live on the road too, and, you know, also managing it, you know, it's a big responsibility, serving alcohol to people. So it's something that I do take like very seriously in terms of like, you know, not over-serving people and monitoring, having people... I mean, I have staff, like the people that are doing the trash are making sure people, you know, aren't going where they're not supposed to with the alcohol and stuff like that.
I don't want to have to be...
Anne Marie, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'll ask you to just speak into the microphone. I am fine having a brief dialogue, but I just want to make sure that the public can see this is a public hearing.
Yeah, I don't want to be put in the position where I feel like I have to call the police and complain.
I agree with that.
You know, I just, and I have already been told by somebody on the street that selling one's house next to your farm does not enhance the value of one's home, which I was astonished to hear.
I had not heard anything like that.
I'll suggest we limit our discussion to the liquor license permit. I can appreciate where you're coming from, but I would keep the topic on track.
I now have a bar almost next door to my house. I will now have a bar almost next door to my house. And so, yes, I'm concerned.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much. Are there any, is there anyone else in, either in person or remote, that wishes to speak on this public hearing? And then we'll bring it back to the board for follow-up discussion. I don't see anyone else at all in person that would speak to this. I don't see any hands up in the audience. Board members, any follow-up? Lisa?
Just to talking about that, have you ever had a police detail in the summertime? Whether, because you have such a...
In the fall, we've...
Yes, yes.
It's been years, but we did have one. And we, when Chief Lieber was here, we discussed it with him, and he didn't think that it was going to be helpful. We were, because we're managing the traffic, getting them into the parking lot and parked as fast as possible. He suggested that we didn't pursue it any further.
And when your parking lot becomes so full that you can't take anymore, what do you do with the overflow?
We do plan overflow parking, even to the, to the point where we've never had that many cars before. So two years ago, because we had all the rain on the weekends in the fall, we had two really busy days, Sunday of Columbus Day weekend, and I think it was September 17th. And, because all of a sudden, the sun came out for the first time. Like, the whole summer, it rained, and most of the fall. And we had expansion to the north of our parking lot that was, had been planted into pumpkins. And then we had seeded it with rye grass for the fall and the winter, and we were able to park cars there. So we've never completely filled the parking lot.
All right.
And we do, I do regulate the advertising through Google Ads to, if we see a situation like that arising, turn off the ads, turn off TV ads so that we're not overwhelmed with customers.
Well, in this case too, you're going to have a new product. And a farm-to-table is a wonderful product to offer. So that's going to change a little bit because you're going to have more...
Yeah, the farm-to-table would be in the summertime, if we were to decide to do it, not when there's a crowd. An evening activity when it's not crowded.
Like after-hours of the picking?
Yes, yeah.
Or if we, you know, like the year we didn't have the crops, it was, like, we just kind of created events, and we did like a pumpkin fest and a donut festival, so...
Yeah, so in '23, we had a freeze, where we went from 50-degree weather in February to minus 14 on February 14th. And that killed the flowers for the peaches and cherries that year. And it, so for the first 35 years, from 1981 when my parents came here, until 2017, so it was 37 years, we had never lost a peach crop. And then 2017, we lost a peach crop and a cherry crop. And then in 2023, we lost the peach and cherry crop. So the weather is definitely affecting us more going forward in the future. So we're just hoping to give people another reason to come to the farm.
Okay, thank you.
Laura?
I definitely appreciate your comments, Anne Marie, and where you're coming from. I also recognize how important it is to diversify what you're doing. I don't see this as a bar. I see this more as an orchard looking for ways to enhance what they're doing. And I hope, you know, you're both local, you've grown up here. I think you're going to take as much of a vested interest in keeping the streets safe. And if there are problems, we're going to have to figure out ways to do it. But we haven't had problems with this in the past. And I feel like the risk of losing our farms if we don't find ways to help them remain profitable, that land's going to turn into something different. And so I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate that. It's just trying to help, given all of the crop failures and the changes in weather and the unpredictability of it and the expense of running it. I just, I want to acknowledge that on both sides. So I'm trying to explain this on the fly. I'm sorry it's not clear, but I just want you to understand, you know, we're looking at ways to support the community overall. I know that the Tugus family is going to look to keep this, because they want to keep the farm successful. And it's going to be as much in their interest to not have problems as it is in ours. So, I mean, I appreciate your comments, so, thank you.
Question, the thinking about sunset. Sometimes it's well after 8:00 PM, sometimes it's well before. Do you ever foresee serving alcohol after sunset? Even, or how about those dinners that you have? I'm trying to think if there's a way we can find a way to address Anne Marie's concern by tying it more to sunset, if that's even an option.
I mean, even the, in the past, when we did the dinners, it was like more of like a sun, like I feel like we were done by, I mean, by 8:00 anyway.
By dusk.
By dusk.
By dusk, okay.
A lot of times, it was, like, we did a dinner in the orchard. We had one event where people like walked around. Like, they went to the peach orchard, and they got like a peach drink and a peach thing to eat. But it wasn't, that was before dark.
Yeah.
If, would we have an option, if you know the answer, of qualifying the motion to say that serving must stop by sunset? Whether that is, whether we can...
I might have to check with the state.
Right, okay.
They might look for a time.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if it had to be different days.
You could certainly do it as a condition of the license.
Okay.
If you wanted to do that.
Yeah.
That we could add it to the license.
Okay. So it'd still list 8:00 PM?
The application that goes to the state would have that time.
Right, but sort of, it would be 8:00 PM or earlier if sunset is earlier?
I don't see any problem with that.
Okay, does that partially address some of your concerns? If we made sure, because sunset, it's still a little bit light for, you know, another 20 minutes, 30 minutes after sunset?
Yeah.
Yeah. As long as that doesn't constrain your business?
I don't see...
Yep.
I mean, when the days are so short like they are now, we're not open, so it doesn't matter.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, that's, you know, as you get, you know, into the fall, you know, it's earlier and earlier. But if you're going to be having your events earlier and earlier, and they're corresponding with sunset, just because of the nature of your business, then I think, you know, it doesn't, if it doesn't constrain the business and it offers a level of comfort that even rethinking your business, you wouldn't be able to do that unless you came back and, you know, and justified that need, then maybe that's a way to do it. Okay. Does the board, how does the board feel about that?
I agree. I like the ability to find ways that we're going to make the neighborhood feel safe and also help support the business. So thank you for your comments, Anne Marie, to help find a better spot for that.
Mike, did you have your hand up at some point?
No, I think I'm good, yeah.
Okay. Again, this is still a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak on this, I will entertain you. If not, we will, I think, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move the board vote to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mike, seconded by Julianne. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, public hearing is closed. Any further board deliberations? Any further questions for the applicant? Okay, we have a motion in our packet here. I think based on discussion, we can amend to that something like subject that, subject to agreement that no alcohol will be served after sunset?
Yep. Yep, that's perfect.
Okay. Would someone like to make that motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move the board vote to approve the application for a new wine and malt general on-premise license as amended. as amended.
I think you can read the motion as is and then add, subject to agreement, that...
Okay. As submitted by Tugus Family Farm LLC for premises located at 234 Ball Street, with the condition that the licensee receives satisfactory inspections by the building, fire, and health departments, and subject to the agreement that no alcohol be served after sunset.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, I see that as unanimous in favor. Thank you very, very much. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
Not that we don't mind seeing you every summer for the individual events, but now we don't have to do that. Let us know how things go, and the same to you. Let us know if there are any concerns that you see as a neighbor or anything else. Obviously, call the police if there's something urgent, but feel free to send us a letter or an email to keep an eye on things.
I really don't anticipate a problem, but...
Yep.
Once one gets a liquor license, if the business were ever sold, who is going to deal with it? And then, then you don't have agreement the same day.
I'm not going anywhere.
You've been here for a little while.
And that would actually be a whole new approval, because...
I was going to say, I was going to add, if that were the case, it would be a license transfer, and it would have to come back before the board. And it would be another public hearing. You bet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good summer.
Yes, good luck. Next up, we have WRTA presentation, Northborough Public Transportation. You know, there are a couple of representatives, oh, we, yep. Josh, you're already raising your hand. Hold on, I'm going to bring in Nick, Josh. Turn on your cameras if you'd like. Excellent. Can you hear us?
We can, good evening.
Can you hear us?
We can hear both of you. Excellent, so thank you very, very much. So, as the board is aware, WRTA, through one of your consultants, did, had an event in town back a few months ago. Some of us were there at that event, and then there were some follow-up meetings and Zoom presentations. I participated in a couple of those. And then, at our last meeting, it was brought up, hey, you know, what's the status of this? What's, you know, what's going to happen and when, and everything like that? So, I really do appreciate you coming together and updating your presentation for us tonight and giving us a little rundown. So, we have hard copies of it. The public has seen the earlier version that went into our meeting packet. If you would like to share your screen and walk us through that briefly, that would be fantastic.
Well, thank you so much.
And I'll sure ask some questions at the end, yeah.
Turn it over to Nick. So, good evening, and thank you so much for inviting us. Nice meeting. My name's Josh Rickman. I'm the administrator of WRTA. I've been at the authority about a year and a half now. In the past six months, the WRTA's been working with the town of Northborough, as well as Shrewsbury and Westborough, on a transportation study. So, this is a study that we have coined as a connecting community study, and these studies really focus on ways to improve transportation options for WRT member communities. I'm very hopeful, as the administrator, this is the first of many of these studies, to improve transportation options for WRT member communities. Spearheading this effort is Nick Burnham, who is the WRT's Director of Operations and Planning. Nick, as you, as you shared, has a creative presentation tonight, and I'll be handing it over to him. So, thank you so much.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm going to share my screen. Can you confirm that you can see the PowerPoint?
We do.
Excellent, thank you. So, thank you, Josh, for the introduction. Again, my name is Nick Burnham. I'm the Director of Operations and Planning for WRTA, and this study was known as Connecting Communities. A comprehensive transportation vision for Shrewsbury, Westborough, and Northborough. Yes, it's a mouthful. Right, let's move on to the next line. So, just a little bit about the project. The website is here at the R T A dot com slash the extra mile. That's what we're branding, the overall contract that we have between WRTA and Nelson Nygaard, who is the planning consultant that we hired to conduct this work. The final document was released today. It was put up on the website. We will send something tomorrow to the towns that were part of the study, just to let them know the plan is available. It's available on the website. It's a very large document, so it's easier to point to the website versus attaching it. But for those who may not be familiar with what the project was, it's a comprehensive kind of operational service analysis of the current transit services through WRTA in the three communities, the study area of Shrewsbury, Westborough, and Northborough. So, it looked at all of the current services that WRTA provides, and we did what we felt was a very robust public outreach process, getting out, not only talk to the towns, but talking to the employees of the towns, you know, planning, administration, council on aging staff, Board of Health, so on and so forth. And we had asked Nelson Nygaard to not only do workshops, kind of with the communities, the employees, but actual, within the community as well, to hear from the public, to hear from residents who are using those services, or also a marketing attempt, too, to make our services a little bit more known for people who may not know what WRTA has to offer in those towns currently. And we also did a public meeting for MBTA users as well, to get their feedback, because, you know, somebody may not live in Northborough directly or Westborough directly, but come through the community in order to get to either the Westborough or Southborough MBTA stations. So, the overall goal of the project was to develop a service plan for future services that incorporates what we heard from the communities, what the needs are as identified by the communities, the feedback that we collected along the way throughout the public process. And I'll talk a little bit further about it. It was a kind of a three-phased recommendation approach, short, medium, and long-term. So, the first phase, we're calling kind of the short-term recommendations, are what we call relatively cost-neutral, in terms of what could we do today in, with our current limitations. You know, we don't have extra buses, don't have extra drivers to just throw out onto the street in six months' time. So, I'll talk about that in another slide or two. So, the overall plan has a detailed market and service analyses. So, going in through it, there's an analysis on the overall market of the communities, really what the population, employment densities are, transit demand in terms of kind of taking what was learned from that market analysis and applying it to, you know, industry standards for providing public transit, then a transit propensity index. So, this takes what was the results from the first two, and then adds in other socio-demographic information from the U.S. Census regarding those who are below the federal poverty level, zero-car households, households in which there is a member with a disability, limited English proficiency, excuse me, and then an overall travel flow analysis of the area based off cellular data. I believe it was from over a two-month period that was used in the plan of cellphone, you know, pinging throughout the Shrewsbury, Northborough, Westborough area. The plan also reviewed, again, our existing services. So, what we call fixed route or a large bus. We have routes 12 and 15. Neither one do come into Northborough. Both are Worcester to Shrewsbury in reverse. The on-demand micro-transit service, which right now we call Via WRTA, that is primarily Shrewsbury and Westborough, though Northborough Crossing and the Amazon facility in Northborough are in the current zone. And then what we call paratransit, or others know as our van service, we do have a contract with the Shrewsbury Council on Aging, and we do have a contract with the Northborough Council on Aging to provide services to those who are 60 and over, or to those who have a disability, regardless of their age. So, kind of just drilling this down for Northborough as part of the plan, the transit composite demand showed that the community would be best supported by what we call demand response or on-demand type of service. A lot of the kind of market analysis and transit demand didn't reach the threshold for, you know, fixed route bus service necessarily today. The transit propensity index does score for Northborough a little on the lower end, but slightly higher in the center of town, which makes sense, given that, you know, there's a housing authority property, I believe, next to your library. And a couple of, you know, again, town center makes more sense to be higher on that scale because of the higher densities and so on and so forth. And probably, no surprise to Northborough, but the southern portion of the town rated the most on the travel flow analysis due to the significant number of local trips coming in and out of Northborough Crossing. From the travel flow analysis that Nelson Nygaard had provided, I believe it was an average of just under 800 car trips a day, kind of generating in and out of Northborough Crossing. That probably goes up on weekends due to the demand, but that's what that analysis had found from there. So, then, the last part of the plan is getting into service recommendations. So, as I had said before, the recommendations are designed into three stages, short, medium, and long-term. So, sometimes when you hear that short-term, medium, long-term, you think, oh, okay, one-year plan, three-year plan, five-year plan. But for this, we decided not to attach years to it, because, in all honesty, it's completely dependent on funding. It's, it's completely dependent on increased funding for us to hire drivers, to increase service, and also, we have to purchase buses. It's not that we keep, you know, the Federal Transit Administration has strict rules on what they call a spare ratio. We just can't buy 50 buses, use 20 or 25, and keep the rest of them, you know, at our disposal. It's a very tight window, if you would. So, the medium and long-term recommendations, which I'll talk about on the next slide, those are more heavily dependent on increased funding. But the short-term recommendations are similar to what the existing services are with a kind of a minor tweak. So, really, the biggest change from the Nelson Nygaard recommendations was focused on redesigning the current micro-transit service area, or currently Via WRTA, to incorporate a larger portion of Northborough. Because I had said earlier, the current service area for Via is really limited towards Northborough Crossing and Amazon up off Bartlett Street. It doesn't incorporate really any other section of Route 20 or towards the town center. It's just those kind of specific locations determined a couple of years back when the service had started. So, I'll discuss that in the next slide as well. So, this is just kind of a screenshot from the plan of where each recommendation went, between the short-term, medium-term, and long-term. So, for Northborough specifically, the medium-term recommendation was to extend the current Route 15 bus, which ends at Shrewsbury Crossing in the center of town, to extend that out to Northborough Crossing. And then, the short-term recommendations, including Northborough for what is currently Via WRTA, to kind of divide the current zone into two, one for Shrewsbury and one for Northborough, Westborough, that I'll show you on the next slide. And then, for the councils on aging service, there were no changes at this time recommended. So, some, you may be familiar that Northborough, we have a little bit of a unique arrangement for our paratransit in Northborough, as Northborough provides, through the Council on Aging, service to Westborough and Boylston two days a week for out-of-town medical. This goes back to when the Assabet Valley COA existed, almost 15, 20 years ago. So, right now, Northborough is providing that, you know, on behalf of WRTA to those towns on a very limited basis. So, I know this is really tough to see. We'll have the map link available on the project website. So, I apologize, it's very tough to kind of see over a presentation. But right now, the current Via zone is incorporated here with the Northborough Crossing and Walmart and this section, larger section of Shrewsbury. What we're proposing and what came from the plan was to kind of split the zone due to the amount of vehicles that's needed, and honestly, based on the demand as well. With the current Via service, we're seeing a lot of Shrewsbury trips staying to Shrewsbury or to Northborough Crossing, and a lot of Westborough trips staying within Westborough. So, the thought was to split into two zones in order to make the service a little bit more efficient. But in order to do that, this Westborough-Northborough zone would incorporate much of Route 20 and much of the center of town. And we received comments throughout the outreach process about incorporating a condominium development and Algonquin Regional High School. So, I know it looks like the zone here might not capture the school in its entirety, but I'll double-check. I believe it does encapsulate the school buildings, because how Via currently works is an app on your phone, similar to Uber or Lyft. So, say, a student is in front of the school building and requested a ride, you know, just because it looks like the zone might cut off from the athletic fields or something like that, they would still be able to book. But the app does tell you if you're not in the service zone. So, if you were hanging out, I'll use an example, you know, a bad example being Marlboro, but if you were at the Hilton Garden Inn in Marlboro, and you tried to request a trip to Northborough Crossing, the app will tell you that you're not in the service zone, and you wouldn't be able to book the trip. And also, as part of this, currently with Via, they do also operate a customer service center where people can call for those who don't have a smartphone. The biggest difference between Via and something like an Uber or a Lyft, Uber or Lyft or any other cab, they'll come directly to your door as best they can in order to bring you from your origin to destination. Via does group trips. So, say, I were at the library, and Josh were, you know, down the street, a half-mile away on Route 20, and we both say, well, we both want to go to Northborough Crossing at, you know, 1:00 or whatever. Via will come back and say, can the two of you meet, you know, across the street, and we'll pick you up there? And we do have wheelchair-accessible vehicles for those who need those accommodations. So, it's a slightly different service than what you're used to with Uber or Lyft or any kind of cab, just to kind of encapsulate that. So, the next steps, the current contract that WRTA has with Via expires at the end of our state fiscal year, which is June 30 of 2025. And just to highlight what this does cost to WRTA, the current service is just a little over $650,000 a year. This is for four vehicles in service, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So, currently, WRTA was very fortunate to receive a federal grant through the Central Mass Metropolitan Planning Organization, or the CMMPO. So, 80% of the total cost is reimbursed through a federal grant, but that grant is likely to be fully expended sometime in state fiscal year 2027. So, with the remaining 20%, or what's known as the local match, that comes from WRTA's operating budget currently, and member communities are assessed annually. And on the town's cherry sheet, which is done by the Division of Local Services at the state level, there is a line item for regional transit. So, if you were to look at Northborough's assessments, you would see a line item for regional transit where the local assessment not only takes in... So, in this situation, Via is not factored in, because Northborough's technically not a member community of Via. It is just Shrewsbury and Westborough. But Northborough is assessed for trips that are provided by the Council on Aging. So, that's where that 20% comes in. But one other thing to add is that each member community in this study area has what's known as an MBTA assessment. So, that is also located on your town's cherry sheet as a distinct line item that says MBTA. And there's funding available there that could potentially be used for partially funding any new service. I apologize... I apologize, I don't have the Northborough number off the top of my head. But basically, if we were to add the Shrewsbury/Northborough and Westboro MBTA assessment, it certainly wouldn't get to $650,000 a year. But between the three and what the new micro-transit service would look like, there's a potential for that, those MBTA assessment funds to be used. So our next steps is, again, our contract with VIA does expire at the end of June, but we will, because we're using federal dollars, we have to issue a procurement for a new micro-transit service operator. Right now, we have that procurement slated to go out at the beginning of March. Because this operation is what's called turnkey, and some of our peers have gone through more recent procurements of this service, we don't anticipate that there will be a lack of potential bidders, if you would. But with that procurement, we would have an implementation date of July 1st to ensure continuity of service. But what we will incorporate into that new procurement is the recommendation from this plan to split what we call our current micro-transit zone into the two zones, one being that Shrewsbury/Northborough Crossing, the other being the Westboro/Northborough Zone. So thank you for your time. I will stop sharing, and if you have any questions, through the chair, please.
Great, thank you very much. I just want to make mention that the FY26 preliminary cherry sheet shows the MBTA assessment at $92,000 and change. Current FY25 is $89,000 and change. And that is currently, I think, just assessed and just goes back into the ether. But the hope was is that we'd be able to then apply that to this. Just on a financial question, you know, as much advance notice, as far as those financial details are going to be critical, that if we need to anticipate budgeting anything that isn't already in the mix, we need to know that before anything happens. It sounds like, because you've got money and you've got this grant in through sometime next year, correct?
Yeah, so based on what we know of current costs of what the services cost us the past four years, when we go to re-procur, we're not asking any potential vendor to go above and beyond the current service offering. So it'd be that relative 12 hours a day, Monday through Friday. So if we were to assume a new vendor comes on based on, you know, some cost escalators, we feel comfortable that we're still, the grant funding will last us through state fiscal year 2026, but state fiscal year 2027, I can say confidently, would not be covered 100% by that grant.
And I don't remember if you mentioned it, the cost to the rider per ride, I think is $2 fixed per ride, correct?
Correct, yep, I did not mention that. Thank you for catching that. Yes, it's $2 per trip.
Right, which is for the vast majority of rides, a lot cheaper than Uber or Lyft. And do you think that that might change once you go out to bid? Or are you bidding with that condition, or you're going to have to wait and see what bids come back?
So that's not something we've identified today, but it's certainly something we do have to incorporate in the future procurement.
Okay, perfect. With that, I'd love to open it up to members of the board for questions.
Okay, I'll start. So on the project background slide, the cost, if you could, it says relatively cost-neutral first phase. So I guess what I'm really getting at is, can you simplify what the cost to the town will be? Either immediately or if, you know, in the second phase or third phase?
So Nick, I'll take this one. So we have a grant right now through state fiscal year '26. So that means that next year, July 1 through June 30 of 2026, there really shouldn't be any big change in what you've kind of seen. There could be, when they put new bids in, there could be some cost escalators, but again, there's still some funding remaining inside that grant. Once we have the bids in, we'll understand the costs for kind of year two, year three, and beyond. At that point in time, we'll be a better place to, okay, here's what we're seeing, here's kind of where the financials are going. We have this MB, we have this pot of MBT assessment funds that we're going to try to go after to help fund this project for local transportation. So it's one of those, we have to go out to bid to kind of get those firm numbers, but we're pretty confident that for next year, we're in a good position to not really see any large financial changes. Nick, anything you want to add or correct on that one?
So the one thing I do just want to add is that if Northborough, so for state fiscal year 2026, if we do go out with this, this current, excuse me, the proposed split in the zones that would cover Northborough, so the trips that are provided to Northborough are still going to be susceptible to that 20% match, but that's handled through an annual assessment that Northborough is already part of anyway. So that kind of gets back to what Josh was saying, was I can't really give you a hard number today because there's still going to be the, you know, demand response, what Northborough Council on Aging provides. So that 20% isn't going to be to Northborough. So say hypothetically, the service costs $700,000 for state fiscal year '26, that doesn't mean Northborough gets a bill for 20%. Because there's going to be factored in with Shrewsbury, factored in with Westboro, and other factors within our annual assessment process that may bump that number down. But in terms of kind of hard and fast dollars, I don't have anything for you on that tonight.
It sounds like you're going out to bid in March? Is that what I remember?
Correct.
Okay, so you'll, we'll know at the end of March, beginning of April, what things will look like? Okay, great.
So really, yeah, realistically, once we receive bids back, we'll know. We have not determined yet. So the current agreement with VIA was for four years. We haven't decided yet if we want to do three or, you know, beyond that, however we want to structure that yet. But certainly, say if we did go out for a three-year procurement, we'll know from vendors, it's going to be, this is year one cost, this is year two, and this is year three. They have to bid it that way.
Can I ask?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so I live about as far away from the center of town as you can get. Will this service come to my house? Or I have to get somewhere within that zone?
Correct. So if you're outside of that shaded area, you would have to be within there to access the service. It wouldn't be throughout the entire town's geography.
Okay. And you mentioned high school students. So any age can call this? I mean, I guess, you'd have to be 16 and over, or what do you?
VIA doesn't have a hard and fast, generally, they'll, I believe they'll ask under 12. But our experience was in Westboro, it was a positive kind of unattended consequence where the VIA service area within downtown Westboro encapsulates the high school. And we found within the first, you know, six months to a year, that a lot of students, rather than, you know, kind of plan their activities around the after-school bus schedule, their parents were signing them up to use VIA so that they could grab, you know, rather than say, all right, well, you know, baseball goes until 3:45, you need to make sure you get on the 4 o'clock after-school bus. Well, if baseball went to 4:10, just request VIA, you know, if you're able to, you know, whenever you're ready. So there are high school students that are using VIA currently in Westboro. And we actually were approached in Shrewsbury as well, just kind of kicking the tires to see what that's like. It certainly is no replacement for school transportation. I can't, I can't make that more known, in case anybody from FTA is listening. We, school transportation, distinct schools' transportation is not allowed for transit authorities. But as long as it's open to the public, like this VIA service, certainly teachers, you know, people at Algonquin certainly open to use it.
Okay, my last question is, what type of vehicle is this, you know, this point-to-point, you know, the smaller, the VIA service? What kind of vehicle is that usually?
So right now, they're using a series of Dodge vehicles. I don't have the model right off the top of my head. There is a wheelchair-accessible minivan. And when the service first started, they were using a series of like Chrysler Pacificas. But in there, VIA has an agreement with a vehicle leasing to get vans or other vehicles kind of replaced every couple of years. One of the big things in this future procurement, we are going to ask for, is that all vehicles be wheelchair-accessible versus, right now, we only have one that's available. So I can't say what a future vendor would have, but I would likely say they would be predominantly minivans or some type of vehicle that is lift-equipped.
So it really, you wouldn't be able to ask that they be hybrid or electric?
We have not considered that. I, we can certainly discuss and consider for it. If it were hybrid or electric, I'm not sure regarding accessibility of chargers, and most certainly would drive up the cost, especially for electric significantly.
Okay, thank you.
Questions or comments? Otherwise, Laura.
So I don't know if you've got any feedback from the Council on Aging or what the demand has looked like from a Northborough perspective so far. Do you have any information on that?
Yep, Kendra, the COA director, was heavily involved in this process. So she, in speaking with her, and I maintain a, you know, working relationship with her outside of this project, as we are, you know, we do have a contract with the Northborough COA anyway. She was, you know, looking at it from the COA lens, where she didn't see any type of, if, say, a micro-transit service came into town, she didn't see any kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul, if that makes sense. Because paratransit is a very niche service. It's for people, you know, again, those 60 and over, or anybody with a disability, regardless of age. I don't have the Northborough stats right in front of me, but I'd be sure to say that probably 75% to 80% of Northborough paratransit trips are to medical facilities, and they're for medical facilities for a reason. So I definitely don't see any micro-transit growth coming in and taking away. It's certainly not going to replace people going to dialysis at UMass or, you know, things of that nature.
I'm so sorry, I think I'm confused. So are people still going to be able, number one, you've raised another question, are people that need to go to medical appointments, are they still going to be in the service areas that will be able to get to their medical appointments the way that they're currently using VIA for?
I think I can answer that question. I think you said earlier that the Senior Center Van Program is not changing at all, correct?
Correct, nope, yep, that will stay completely as is.
So will this be a new service for Northborough, or is this going to be replacing VIA?
So what we're proposing, so I apologize, I know it is a little confusing. I can't say VIA past June 2025 because that's when our contract ends. But we are going out to procurement this spring with the mindset of expanding the current micro-transit area to be a new service in Northborough.
So right now, we have no historic data of what usage has been because this will be new?
We do have some, because there is, the service area today does encapsulate Northborough Crossing, Walmart, and the Amazon facility on Bartlett Street. So we do have some, we do have some tangential data on what trips are from Northborough. It is heavily Shrewsbury people coming to Northborough or Westboro people getting to Northborough, not so much that Northborough within Northborough, unless somebody really wanted to take it from Walmart to Wegmans or something like that, they certainly can. But we do have some preliminary information. And based on the service analysis that was done in this plan, kind of identified that, you know, center-of-town Route 20 stretch as a great candidate for micro-transit because kind of the population and employment densities didn't necessarily get to the level of, you know, a large-scale bus coming through Northborough every hour.
If I remember right from the draft presentation that I attended back in December, that Solomon Pond Mall was also going to be part of the Northborough region, is that still the case?
So that's the plan. It would basically just be a point. So kind of that area where the service zone drops after Algonquin, say, there would just be a point on the map. So you couldn't get, you couldn't request a vehicle, say, north of Algonquin High School to Solomon Pond Mall. It would be the service, within the service area directly to Solomon Pond Mall. And that was to create a connection with our peers at the Metro West Regional Transit Authority out of Framingham. They offer services to Solomon Pond Mall as Marlboro is in their service area.
Yep. So I mean, one of the benefits of that is someone from Northborough, if they had a Framingham medical appointment, or just wanted to go to Framingham in general, they could take this, stop at the Solomon Pond Mall, and then basically switch buses, if you will, switch transportation to that system, or just take at Solomon Pond Mall to go shopping, which is nice. I thought that was creative thinking. You know, as the parent of two teenagers, one of whom is now a driver, and the other is too young to be a driver, thank goodness, I can see them using a service like this quite a bit to get around town and take some of the burden off of the older drivers. Well, they would pick up at your house. I mean, if you're within the zone. No, these are vans.
Oh, this is the VIA, this is not a bus?
Correct, no, this is the VIA, yes. So a daughter would be able to call a VIA, pick up at home or nearby and say, I want to go to the mall, or I want to go to Northborough Crossing.
But they only have, they only have a limited place that they can go to, like the mall, Wegmans?
No, it's anywhere within the zone, correct?
To a friend's house?
Yep, as long as the pickup and destination, it's like, it's like an Uber or Lyft. As they said.
Right, but the service area in Northborough.
You're outside of the zone, unfortunately.
So.
Yeah, so this, and my hope is, is this will expand to larger amounts in Northborough over time, but I know you did a detailed study as far as where people are and everything else. Try to get the bulk of people in Northborough.
What percent of town is covered?
Third?
The third, you think?
Is it the blue area or the red area?
The blue area, the red area is Shrewsbury.
Yes, that's, that's.
I have another question.
Okay, Laura.
So if we agree to this and we are in a three-year contract and that grant gets withdrawn, are we responsible for that $600,000 or whatever the amount is on an annual basis?
No, so the way that this would work is, right now, that grant is ours. We will be fully executing that grant down to zero dollars, as much as we can, so that's not going away. So that should get us through basically June 30 of 2026. So we really have almost a full budgetary year to have further conversations, have better understanding where the cost would be. Now, let's say the number is 600,000. What we will do from there is we will pursue funds in cooperation with the town or towns on the MBTA assessments. And I think as we've shared, it's about $90,000 that the town Northborough has access to with those MBT assessment funds. So I can't speak to Shrewsbury or Westboro's, but they also have significant funds. So I think that will be step two. Okay, so we can't offset via the grant, let's offset via the MBTA Community Assessment Funds. And then kind of that remaining amount is where we'll be thrown into the assessment process, that 20% match. If we don't find any of that to be successful, we will be, you know, coming back to you all and having a bigger conversation. But no, in terms of saying 600,000 would be all on Northborough, that don't be the case, because this is going to serve a split between Shrewsbury, Westboro, and Northborough.
Mike.
I have to kind of, again, to get back to those bids, we have to see where those bids come in, and that's how, allow us to kind of that longer-term financial picture. But right now, through June 30 of '26, this is covered.
So questions? So just to kind of put it perspective for myself, so the amount now for the contract that expires in 2025, the 650,000, that's the cost that's mostly being paid for by a grant to provide the VIA service right now to Westboro, Shrewsbury, and a small portion of Northborough that we're looking to expand to a larger portion of Northborough?
Correct.
Okay, and that's four vehicles? Okay. And that's four vehicles, Chrysler Pacificas and a, and a minivan. Uh, Monday through Friday, you said twelve hours a day?
Seven AM to seven PM.
Seven AM to seven PM. Okay. Um, so, and you said that was a four-year contract, right? When it was signed with VIA?
The one we're in now, correct.
Okay. So four years, six, six hundred and fifty thousand. So it was like a two hundred, or excuse me, um, like two point six million dollar contract?
Uh, it, the costs were a little less. They've escalated over the years. But the thing that we'll have in our procurement is that we'll know what the defined costs are going into each year. So say, say a new vendor bids starting at six fifty, they can't come to us in year two and say, oh, it's going to be eight ninety.
Right.
That's just not how our, you know, federal procurements work. It's outlined upfront. Otherwise that contract doesn't get signed by WRTA.
Okay. And then say, okay, it, service expands to a larger portion of Northborough. How is it, and, and right now a good chunk is covered by a federal grant. Um, you know, federal money may be a little bit harder to come by in the next few years, say, let's make an, maybe an assumption there. Um, how is, um, Northborough's portion assessed roughly? Is it, you know, how many people use whatever the rideshare service is and, okay, like, a lot of people, you know, Shrewsbury was number one, Westborough number two, Northborough number three. And it's proportional in that way based on total rides?
Exactly. That's correct. So say, say hypothetically, next year, twenty percent of the trips originate from Shrewsbury, thirty percent originate from Northborough and fifty percent originate out of Westborough. It's done exactly that way. We track how many trips are, you know, origin, destination out of those communities in order to be used as part of a local assessment. Because remember the assessment will also incorporate the Council on Aging service as well. It's not just strictly this micro transit service.
Okay. So just to, to make sure my thinking is correct. So if I kind of wanted to put up an idea to a number on it. There's the six fifty for the service, eighty percent of it's covered by a grant, twenty percent is under operating budget and member communities. So in that twenty percent, whatever is covered by member communities, that portion would be broken up by, say, percentage of ride. That's like the number we'd be looking at?
Yeah, you, correct. I, i- in a, in a short way, yes.
Okay.
Because it also factors in Shrewsbury, because remember Shrewsbury's part will also factor in what they get for bus service and what they get for paratransit. Westborough gets, as of today, gets very limited paratransit service. So yes, it wouldn't, say, Northborough wouldn't get eighty percent of that twenty percent. Does that make sense?
And by covering, say, larger portions of Westborough and Shrewsbury, theoretically, there'd be more ridership, therefore more cost to them as opposed to Northborough that has a, a, maybe a smaller portion of the town covered.
Absolutely. That, that's absolutely a possibility.
All right. And then the ninety thousand of MBTA assessment, what is North, um, and maybe this isn't a question for you guys, but I don't know for, for Jason or for, for anyone who may know. What, what are we doing with that right now?
I think it just flies away.
What do you mean flies away?
Jason.
It, it's part of our state assessments. So it, it, it comes off the top from our state aid. So we, we don't have a say in what happens to that money. It gets assessed to us and subtracted from our state aid.
How do they get to ninety, how do they get to ninety thousand? What's, what's included in that cost?
I don't know.
So it's just, okay.
I think it's, I think it's a formula.
I assume it's a formula as well.
It's, it is a formula. Um, I don't have the actual formula. It, it's largely based on population of the community and the employment of the community. Um, so for example, the, you know, the town of Grafton has a commuter rail station. To my knowledge, the town of Northbridge is neighboring, they have a higher population and a higher employment base. So their MBTA assessment is slightly higher than the actual town of Grafton's, even though Grafton has the commuter rail station. So that's why Northborough is assessed per the MBTA assessment because of its proximity to Westborough. It's the commuter, the community in which the commuter rail station is in plus one town out.
Okay.
Uh, cause the assumption, if you would, is that Northborough residents are benefiting from, um, having the commuter rail station in Westborough. But the, the thing that we did discuss in the slide is there is the ability to, so that money is part of your town's assessment. It's in your municipal budget, you know, it is what it is. But there is a provision, um, with the Division of Local Services where that money could be used towards new service, new transit service in your community. So say this micro transit comes to fruition, we are able to add in Northborough. Um, I don't have the defined process in front of me. That's something, um, Josh, we're working on as an agency to kind of get some more definition as to how exactly those funds come to the RTA. But basically that MBTA assessment, whatever that amount is, ninety thousand can be applied to new transit service.
Right. So it's not that Northborough can say, hey, state, we want our assessment to be used towards this new service. But there's a process by which we can apply for that and see if that, all or some of it could be used for our, our cost of, um, our, our portion.
Correct. Exactly.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
All right. I have quite a few questions. Cause I'm not, I'm not somebody who takes a ride on a bus often. So right, I just kind of recap because there's so much information coming in. The ninety-two thousand dollar assessment that we now pay for the MBTA assessment, you're saying that we can apply to have some of that amount? Or all of the amount we need from the ninety-two? Or you're saying that we have the opportunity, not that we will necessarily get it, but we have the opportunity to apply for that to be used. Is that correct?
Yep.
So it's just the op- So it's the opportunity. That, that's a big, that's, that's a very important part of this because it's not like we absolutely have it. It's just, you had the chance.
I'll give you some, some color for this. A lot of this started, um, with when Tim McInerney was town administrator. When he was town administrator in Grafton, you're, you're nodding your head because you, you were probably part of this, is that he said, Oh, Grafton is being assessed a ton of money, um, by the MBTA. Let's see if we can get some public transportation in here and use that money instead. And that's what they did in Grafton. So this, I think the phone call to you came from Tim that says, hey, can we do the same thing in Northborough?
Yep.
All right. So that, again, I, I don't, I, what I'm, what I'm saying is that it isn't an absolute. It is, it is the application that you can make.
But I think it's-
And I think that's important.
Yeah.
Now, some of the other-
It's what the money is for, but yes, it is a process.
All right. Because there's, then, then I just want to go back to, then we still have, um, buses that have been supplied to the, uh, Council of Aging. I don't know if it's on a contractual basis, if it's signed up for a year, two years, three years or four years. But there's so many, so many, maybe five that we have.
We have three right now.
We have three right now.
Two.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Yep. Northbrook, so Northbrook, so take, let's talk with the Council on Aging just to, uh, answer that question. So it's an annual contract that WRTA provides to the town of Northborough for the Council on Aging. So WRTA owns and maintains the vehicles. And Northborough Council on Aging through a monthly reimbursement process is reimbursed for, um, driver wages, the associated fringe related to that, um, and fuel.
Okay. So, so they apply to this amount of money for those three things, the driver, the fuel and whatever you said.
Different pot of money.
No, yes, different, different avenue. There's already a regional transit assess, so there, i- if you were to look at the cherry sheet for Northborough, there's one line item for that MBTA. It, it literally says MBTA. And then there's another line item for regional transit. So today, if you were to pull up, you know, FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four cherry sheet for Northborough, the amount you see in that regional transit assessment, that's based on the Northborough Council on Aging.
It's twenty-seven thousand.
All right. So, and what I find, what I, what I've learned, that sometimes you can't get the drivers for these two vehicles. And I'm not quite sure.
They're having a hard time hiring drivers.
Right. This is, and this is not short-term. This has been going on for a while.
Correct.
So, um, so that's a little bit of a, a quote, a concern. So, and then to go back to, if I were, if I were a person who wants to get to use this, it's not going to be a bus anymore here because we don't have enough need for a bus. We're just going to do a micro, uh, van or those four vehicles that you spoke of. So in, in somewhat of an Uber-like, uh, going from point A to point B, it's only going to be able to take you certain places from point A to point B. And it's those places that you have determined, say, route twenty would be one. So if you're downtown and you wanted to get to Wegmans, would you, how would you get from, from, how would you get to downtown if you're not living downtown? If you're not living on, on the route?
So it's not a route. It's, it's, it's a large region. And, I mean, large is relative, but this, this bluish purplish area on the map is the region that this Uber-like service would cover. And it includes Northborough and it goes into Westborough and parts of Shrewsbury. And anywhere within that, you can go anywhere within that. It's not a predefined route. So it's, it's, that, that is the area and you just say, I want to go from this part to that spot.
Okay.
And you go. In addition to that, they're also covering Solomon Pond Mall as a, a little blip off in the corner.
And that's where the Amazon comes in, part of that corner?
And the Amazon is a current blip off.
Is that correct? So who goes to Amazon?
Employees, correct?
Yep. Correct.
Really? Cause one whole building's, isn't it robotics?
No, it's, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
Oh, I was at, to our knowledge, they're employees. Uh, we don't get that, you know, in the weeds on that, you know, who, who is using the service. It's anonymized. Uh, but I would presume it is employees that are coming from, uh, the Westborough train station or just within Westborough or Shrewsbury.
And do you have a number of employees or a number of, of travel back and forth?
I can certainly get the number of trips that were to and from that facility. Uh, I just don't have that at my disposal.
Okay. So, so I'm thinking more at cost and, and contract situation. We're going to sign a contract based on, um, an unknown because we're really, we're underneath the, the ceiling of what the other two towns have, correct? For travel right now, because you have transit propensity towards a lower end, but it was low, it wasn't even on the scale from what I understand. For Northborough.
I apologize. I, I'm not exactly sure of the question.
The, the amount of need is far lower than, in Northborough than it is in Shrewsbury and Westborough.
Correct. Yes. So the transit propensity index isn't as high, if you would, along majority of Northborough as it would, you know, a section of route nine, you know, in White City and Shrewsbury and things of that nature.
Okay. Cause you said it did not meet the threshold.
It did not meet the threshold for a large scale bus like you would see in downtown Worcester. But it did, it did meet the kind of industry standard for providing an on-demand type service.
Okay. So back to the contracts and what you're asking us for contracts. Do you expect the towns, I guess all three towns, to do a year, a two-year, a three-year, a four-year? What, what, what's the term of the contract that we would be, um, stuck to?
So the town isn't stuck to the contract. It's, WRTA has the contract.
Okay.
Um, so I can't speak to if we did this after, you know, if Northborough after a year, you know, wants to reassess their participation. That's a conversation for, you know, down the road. Um, but WRTA, because we are the ones, you know, we are the recipient of federal funds. We lead the procurement. We lead the contract. So say we go out on the street with a three-year contract, just hypothetical. We have not determined that yet. Um, I can say that typically in our industry, three years is kind of, um, a standard. I- if we were to go less than, we could be potentially scaring off vendors. Uh, because it's a large investment on their end to get up to scale. Um, so they may not be interested in bidding on a one or a two-year contract. I can't say that definitively, um, but just in my experience, uh, with procurement, that's generally how it would be. Um, so we, I don't have a definitive answer right now. We are envisioning likely a three-year contract. Um, there's potential for option years, but that's, you know, besides the point. Um, but that would be a contract between WRTA and whichever service provider, you know, is evaluated. Um, and again, you know, Josh had highlighted before, we're comfortable with what is available in the grant to cover state fiscal year twenty twenty-six and part of state fiscal year twenty twenty-seven based on today's contract cost. I don't see the contract from proposed vendors widely swinging, but, um, we're confident we have those funds now. But in terms of beyond that twenty-seven, you know, that's certainly something if the community wants to talk to WRTA about at that time, you know, on the fence, so on and so forth, it's certainly a conversation we'll have.
All right. So we're, we're not under contractual obligation, right?
The town is not.
All right. And then-
WRTA is.
Okay. So then-
WRTA would be.
Okay. When, because we're not under contract, we would then spend, we would, say you put aside this area of Northborough and then it wasn't utilized as much as you had hoped. Then you, you come back and say, okay, we're not making enough for the, for the service that we're offering to you because you're not utilizing it or vice versa, you're using more than we had anticipated. So either one of those things can happen or it can stay pretty much the same. We don't know. I mean, we haven't had a lot, a big call for this sort of, um, transportation just because of the way that the town's laid out and most people drive, quite frankly. So-
True. Yep. Uh, but, but this did come up through the study process and through our public outreach process about, you know, there were at, you know, the Northborough Community Workshop, there were some of the workshops we had with, you know, the COAs, the town planning staff, um, boards of health, so on and so forth, that it was a, well, hey, Shrewsbury's got this and Westborough's got this too. We're in the middle. How can we, you know, how do we participate as well? I would certainly say that, you know, adding in the section of Northborough, it's not like in three or six months, we'll say, oh, no one's using this, pull the plug. It, it, there would definitely be multiple in this, when this service started in twenty twenty, it was Westborough only and that small Northborough Crossing Walmart section. Um, so Amazon came later, Shrewsbury came later, uh, about less than a year into the, the launch. Um, so it definitely, if we do see under utilization or things of that nature, you know, we'll work with whatever service vendor to help market, do some promotion. You know, certainly get word out there beyond just, hey, the service is out there. Try to catch it when you can.
Okay. And then going into the, going back into the MBTA assessment that we pay. In having the service later on, one or two, three years down the road, would that, I don't know that you can answer this question or even Jason, but would that increase our assessment from the state?
For the MBTA assessment line item? That I am not aware of.
Yeah. I think, I believe the MBTA assessment is based on MBTA service levels. So it's dependent upon what MBTA is providing on that Worcester line. And that's how that number is being developed based on the other, uh, variables Nick laid out before about employment and population and all of that. So it's kind of an MBTA number, not a WRTA number. Um, but like I said, we'll, we will be diving deeper into that for, for future funding.
Okay. So we don't, we don't have to make a decision on this tonight, right?
I don't, I don't think there's any decision we really have to make at all.
All right. So it's more information.
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Laura?
Has there been any feedback from the community? Cause I think that, that this could potentially help. I'm thinking with the kids leaving high school and wanting to go to these different locations. Has there been any public outreach yet? Is that coming or did that already happen?
So the initial public outreach that was done was part of our planning study. Really that was more of, uh, you know, what would you like to see? What, you know, if it were available, what could it be? So we haven't gotten to the point of promoting any kind of service because we, it does not exist today. But what our vision is, is to procure the service, have it ready for July first with the Northborough incorporate, the Northborough Zone Incorporated. But prior to, we'll work with whomever this vendor is going to be to say, we need to heavily promote in Northborough. Um, we learned a lot when this was promoted in Shrewsbury and Westborough. Um, so we have some lessons learned from that that we could certainly apply to Northborough. We would come back to you all if we could, um, certainly use your contacts within town. We would come back to you all if we could, certainly use your contacts within town to help spread the word as best we could.
I'm looking forward to the data and just seeing what the usage looks like.
Okay, Mike.
Do you know roughly what Shrewsbury and Westborough pay for the current service that they have?
I do not have that off the top of my head. It's certainly something we can look into, though.
Okay, yeah, just, just curious what, what they're currently paying, just to kind of give an idea of maybe what, and, and neither one of those, but Grafton did use its MBTA assessment towards this type of regional transit. The vehicles themselves, are they, is there a requirement or a thought in the contracts that make them all-wheel-drive or, you know, able to go in some level of inclement weather? And at what point does the service stop due to weather?
So the, the vehicle front, we are going to be requesting that all vehicles are wheelchair-accessible. I believe the minivan that they're using now is all-wheel-drive, but we can certainly look into, you know, ma- making that a requirement.
If it's wheelchair-accessible, it's quite heavy, so it's probably, probably good in the snow, but.
I, I don't, I don't want to say 100%, just in case someone throws a front-wheel-drive van at me.
Right, right.
But, so in my recent memory, I don't recall VIA coming to us to cancel for inclement weather. They do, we do review our holiday schedule with them annually, as they are willing to provide service on more of the minor federal holidays, whereas our traditional bus and van service here may operate on like a weekend-level schedule. But it's certainly, we do have our own internal kind of severe weather policy, and that's definitely something we could incorporate a microtransit avenue into regarding, you know, if snow is above six inches or something like that, you know, VIA will communicate, or whomever, excuse me.
Sure.
Will communicate to WRTA and use their communication channels to get the word out to passengers that, hey, service has to end at 2:00 today or something like that due to inclement weather.
Right, yeah, and I'm not advocating either way. I was just curious if, if there was?
Oh, absolutely. I appreciate the question.
And I had, I had one other question, and I'm blanking, so I'm good, I guess.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Any other questions?
I have a really simple question. So is the bulk of your funding federal money?
Correct.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, we're recipients of Federal Transit Administration funds.
We also do receive state contract assistance funds, operating funds of the state of Massachusetts. We do also receive that. A lot of our cap, a lot of our federal funds we use, try to use for, for capital purposes or planning purposes or study purposes. As much as we can, we are allowed to flex over some of that funding for operation needs. But we also do receive funding from the state of Massachusetts and also through the local community assessment process we've kind of detailed today.
Thank you.
Great.
I remembered my last question. So bear with me, please. But, but thank you, gentlemen, for, for, for being available and answering all of our questions as, as best you can. Are, just curious, are the, the drivers through VIA or any possible future contractor, are they employees of VIA or are they subcontracted out, sort of like you would with an Uber or a Lyft? Where they're, they're not really direct employees, they're, they're treated as subcontractors?
Correct. So to my knowledge, the way VIA structures it is similar, where they are independent contractors, but they do have to pass background, you know, license checks. And the other thing that I do want to highlight is because we do use federal dollars, any of the operators in the VIA system now have to be part of our drug and alcohol program. So they are randomly selected for testing and things of that nature through our system, similar to the Council on Aging van drivers. There's no difference in how that process works.
Okay, and the vehicles are tracked?
Not by us, but they are tracked by, currently the VIA system, they have a whole, I'm trying to think, lack of a better term, kind of a portal, if you would. So they were leasing their vehicles through Hertz, kind of like a corporate account. They recently switched, and I apologize, I don't remember who they switched to, but yes, there is kind of like an online portal that WRTA can get into to see, you know, hey, it's, you know, well, bad example now at 8:30, but tomorrow morning at 9:00, I could go on and see, all right, well, there's three vehicles on the road, and here's what the vehicles have been doing today, or look at yesterday or the day prior.
Okay. And one last question. Are the vehicles branded in some way? You know, like sometimes you'll see a little Uber or Lyft thing in the window. Is there something similar like that?
Yes, yep. So right now, the VIA, the vehicles that are used for VIA are housed at the Westborough DPW. So if you were to see one parked there, that's where they are. So VIA does also have a contract or had a contract, excuse me, with Newton, and they have a system in Salem. So sometimes when a vehicle has to go in for maintenance, they'll use kind of a, an unbranded vehicle to help. But yes, the vehicles that we have for our service are branded in the red, white, and blue, based on our current color scheme, and they do have a VIA and WRTA logo on them. And when you do request a ride, similar to Uber or Lyft, it'll come back and tell you, hey, Nick's driving van with this plate info.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions before we wrap it up? I want to thank you again for, for the time tonight. I think this is a really potentially very exciting service for Northborough to have. You know, I think there are multiple categories of users. I've mentioned teens, because I've got some in my house. You know, just about anybody, if your, your car is out of service or anything else, for people that, for financial or any other reason, doesn't have a car, but wants to be able to, to get around town, get to the grocery stores, get to different shopping areas, whether it be, you know, Northborough Crossing or Walmart, or, or even into downtown Westborough. Seniors, certainly, we have the senior center vans, which are great for scheduled transportation. This is unscheduled transportation. This is somebody that decides, you know what, you know, I should go see my doctor today for something, let's, you know, call, call a VIA or whatever it's called in the future. Or, or they just, you know, somebody just wants to take a trip to the store. And these are, these are things we don't have currently in Northborough. Ideally, I hope it expands to even more of the town, but I think your, your logic is sound for roughly where, the, the region that you're starting with. So that's appreciated. With that, I don't see any, any questions or comments from the audience, so I think, I think we can wrap up this agenda item. Thank you very much. Please let us know once you've gone out to bid and what things look like. You can communicate with Stephanie, our town administrator, who's, who's out tonight. You can communicate with Diane, Assistant Town Administrator, and I know you know how to find me.
Well, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, FY 2026 Proposed Budget Update Finance Director, Jason Little. Jason, come on up.
Thanks. Good evening. So they kind of took away the thunder by talking about the cherry sheet so early. That was the next milestone, and that was driving why I wanted to come and talk to you tonight was. But I'm going to talk more than just the, the MBTA assessment as part of it, because I, I don't know the details behind that, that assessment specifically, but our assessments in total did go up $30,000 as part of that cherry sheet. So that, that's a cost we have to fund. But as, but as well, in the governor's budget, we're, we're doing a little better with state aid, and rather, we've modeled 1% in the past. That's typically what we model in our budget models every year. We start with a 1% assumption. That means for Northborough, our state aid is about $112,000 more than what we predicted in our model, but we have $30,000 more of assessments than, than we predicted. So we're, we're net, ahead of the game by about $90,000 in, in our model. So again, I didn't mean, want to jump immediately into talking about the, the cherry sheet, but that's, that was the milestone that led to it to be relevant, to come back before you. The last time we talked about the budget was November, and before that, we, leading up to November, was the financial summit that we had over the summer in, in August. And things that we're putting together, we, we put out, and I did talk to the board before sending out the budget instructions to the departments of more complex set of budget instructions this year, to talk about some of the concepts that were brought up at the, the summit over the summer. And those were a number of departments coming and discussing their needs that have not been met by other budget requests in the past. So the goal was to work through, and, and again, I did my projections, which involved, and let me take a step back. I prepared this memo after having the state aid. It didn't make it into the packet in advance. I don't know, Diane, if this got distributed to everybody or just the chair, but I, I did provide a memo to the board that laid out where we were with the budget requests and so forth so far. So this memo, and I don't know, you can tell me if you have it in front of you or not.
Is it this memo?
That memo there, yeah. So what I wanted to do is walk through the assumptions made at the summit. We did come back and try to determine what the upper limit would be in terms of these requests from departments, like their, their wish lists, or so to speak, or the unmet needs and quantifying those costs, and seeing what, what could we afford should, should we decide to fund all of those requests? And the determination was that using all of the unused levy capacity that the town had, the, the town would have the capacity for budgets, the town and the school departments all to go up 5%, 5.17% was the upper limit. And that would have the rippling effect of the next year probably leading to needing to seek Proposition 2.5 relief next year, whereas at the summit, we presented much more conservative budget numbers, which was an exercise. Nobody knows if we could present a, prepare a budget of level services for 3% with fixed costs like health insurance and the retirement assessment and things like that, that are, that are typically larger than 3%. So the, the upper limit was determined to be 5.17%, and that was alongside getting some new, back at the summit, we used a 4% assumption for health insurance. We've been very successful with our renewals for health insurance every year and partnering with the employee groups to shift costs and so forth. So we've stayed within some, somewhere around a 3% increase in our health insurance budgets over a period of time. The claims data we're getting back from our consultants is where, where the health insurance plan is paying out more than 100% of our premiums, which, what does that drive? It drives a big increase in your health insurance. So we've modeled an 8% increase within that upper limit number, so that, that upper limit number is constrained by the 8% that we budget, budgetarily projected for the health insurance budget. We're still using that number and hopeful that we can make that work out, because I don't know if everybody recalls this, but as part of our free cash certification, there's a big appropriation turnback from health insurance, so we may be able to, to trim back some of the capacity we had within health insurance to, to, to fit in a 10% premium increase with only an 8% increase in the budget, or, or something to that effect. That's one of the things we're currently working on. So again, my point that I wanted to tell you tonight was that we're working on the budget. We've met with most departments internally, with the new town administrator, with Steph, and met with most department heads to this point. We're continuing to refine the numbers and put out something more tangible going forward. The, the point I wanted to make mostly was that we put a lot of thought and effort into those numbers presented at the summit, and things are going to change. There's going to be marginal changes here and there, but it's likely that there is going to be, obviously, we know we're going forward with a very large fire station project, and we're working on the bond issue currently. We're going to go out and those, those bonds will be, the, the bidding for the project's going to be in March. We're going to sell the bonds in April, and it's actually on the calendar. The, the night that the bonds will need to be signed will be the meeting right before town meeting, so we'll know how good our debt service budget was or the 4.25% estimate that we used for the, for the fire station bonds are, as of that point. So basically, the message that was given at the summit is pretty much where the budget's going to be coming in, in, in the end. Other than that, I wanted to update folks with some of the measures that we used previously, which was a discussion about affordability. We looked at some metrics last year, and those tables are provided here, us compared to our closest neighbors, those being Hudson, Shrewsbury, Grafton, Boylston, Berlin, Westborough and Southborough. And updating this with our FY '25 tax bills and tax rates, and we're kind of in the midst of the pack where we were, have, where we've been historically. So the two things that we typically look at as far as measures for affordability, the first would be the statewide ranking. So of the 351 cities and towns in the state, in FY '25, Northborough's rank is 70th, so that it's the 70th highest tax bill. So the, the higher the number that you have, the lower tax bill that you have relative to everybody else. Northborough has been typically around the 60s and in the 50s in the past. Over, over time, relative to the rest of the, the cities and towns in the state, the, the town's rank has dropped relative to everybody else, meaning that 70 is relatively low compared to what it has been in the past. And we're exactly positioned the same relative to our neighbors on, on, on this list of, of, of towns. The next measure was a, a measure of tax effort. Basically, this measure is taking per capita income tax data that the, that the Department of Revenue has and comparing that to the relative tax bills of each, average tax bill for each town. And in terms of this ranking, on, on the second page, there's a graph, a bar graph that shows the, the percentages. Northborough's relative rate has dropped from 14.26% to 12.39%, meaning that the average tax bill is 12.39% of a per capita annual income per the state's data. And it's interesting to look at because the ranking of tax bills is not all the same as tax effort per this measure. So according to this measure, Hudson has the highest level of tax effort, but they have the lowest tax bill, which is, which is an interesting observation in my mind. Other than that, I just wanted to share these updated numbers, and it's, like I said, it's good news that the state aid is a, is 2.83% rather than 1%. But to that end, state aid is a, is a falling share of the state's, of the town's finances. It was as high as 13% of the financial picture. This year, it's, it's shifting below 8, 8%. It's 7.7, 7.1%, some, somewhere in that range of, of the total. So it's less and less meaningful to, to talk about the state aid being the major source of it. It's shifting onto taxpayers as that trend shows. And that concludes my brief presentation at this point, and happy to answer any questions.
I want to follow up on the health insurance number, because that's
Sure.
one I was looking forward to hearing, not necessarily forward to hearing the result. At the Mass Municipal Association Conference this weekend, MIA gave their annual presentation, and I don't believe they provide our health insurance, but they do provide health insurance to some towns. They're modeling a 14% increase. And they announced that at the conference, and there were gasps around the room. They said, it, you know, it, it's going to vary by town and everything else. We're not part of that. Knowing that we'd be speaking with you tonight, I was, I was fearful. Knowing that we'd be speaking with you tonight, I was fearful we'd be in the 14% range. So, hearing 8 to 10 is at least better than that.
Well, 10 is probably the most favorable side of the estimates we're getting. So, we do, when we sit down-
Be as optimistic as you can be and hold that out.
Right. I'm only optimistic because we'd be, by cutting the budget back to, say, 8% or 10%, it is going to reduce the amount of surplus that's generated for free cash in terms of a closeout.
Sure.
So, when we sit down with the consultants and look at these claims data, we pick a time to try to renew and, or give them, the consultant, the message to sign the contract now to renew with, Harvard Pilgrim is our current provider. Typically, as time goes, you know, one month of claims data, a new month's claims data may come in and it may be more favorable than the one that drops off on the other side. And I believe that happened. So, we're going back and hoping for some more favorable data like that. But again, when we sit down with them, they have the data and compare, like we talk about the MIA, because MIA is a very big group in the state and for health insurance, we use MIA for our property and casualty insurance. But they're, them as health insurance brokers, they're a very big, large group. So, it's important, they're very telling. It's a very, it's a bellwether of what's happening in the state. In addition, they look at the GIC and we talk about that. And I think we've heard that there's very large increases coming within that very large employer group as well. But, so people know too, just for reference, I feel like I talked about it a lot, but, and feel like everybody knows this, but we have a JPA joint purchasing arrangement with the town of Southboro and the regional school district. So, we have increased the size of our risk pool as a result of that and have received as a group, more favorable claims as a result of that.
Great. Questions, Lisa?
Okay. So, when you're saying the 5% for the budgets, is it for every department or where's the 5% coming in?
It's simply in total. In total, of all the town budget requests, would have to be within 5% to meet that. I mean, one, a small department might be able to go up 8% while a large department goes up 4%. But it was really just to determine a set of limits around-
And that's the maximum if we wanted to, if we wanted to use all of our levy limit.
Correct.
You're not saying that's the proposal, that's just, you know, that's the-
Correct. That was just to determine an upper limit.
Okay. So, a couple of things are going to mind now because we know that we're going to have, I just, we got an increase already, which is, for me personally, very hard to be able to manage. Next time around, we're going to have the fire station increase and we're going to also have this increase coming on. So, there's going to be two sets of numbers, so to speak, for the new tax bill because it's not just what our operating expenses are, it's what our capital purchase was or whatever you want to call it. In knowing that the next year, we're looking at Prop 2.5 override, what can we do this year to hold that back if possible, to lower some of the expenses we could put off? Like, I think we talked about going from, I don't know if it was five or five-year or six-year automobile replacement to 10? There was some talk about that.
Well, it wasn't really to change the replacement schedule. It was to look at a longer term for the capital plan rather than it being five years of a capital plan. We would look at the capital plan over a 10-year span rather than five. But it wasn't moving out the replacement dates or anything. It was just to try to plan out the, some of the larger capital items that are coming down the road on that longer horizon rather than just five years.
Okay. But we could do that. We could do, we could do that to try to, you know, kind of shift some of that expense that's coming up, couldn't we?
Well, there's an analysis that needs to be done. If the decision is made to postpone replacing a vehicle that's end of his life, there could be operating budget impacts from that related to repairing a vehicle that should be replaced and to that, to that end.
Well, and the reason I ask that-
If I could, I don't mean to interrupt, but I want to make sure since Stephanie wouldn't be here tonight, some budget discussions, I think would be, we're going to have budget discussions probably every meeting through April. I don't want to put Jason on the spot. He's not, he's not involved in those decisions. He can give the numbers. I think some of those questions would be best taken place when Steph is here.
Well, now you've interrupted my train of thought.
I apologize.
So, there are some questions that I would still like to do and I'll get to think for a minute.
Look, could I just finish one thought about that? The capital requests and the worksheets that we sent out to departments to respond with did include the question about what would be the impact of postponing the decision. So, we could try to encapsulate and get our arms around that question in advance of it being asked.
All right. So-
And to the point about the fire station, that debt service is built into these numbers that I've presented here so that, it's not this plus that. It's, that is included within these numbers. So, the increase that was discussed in the first year of the increase is obviously the largest because, you know, we're adding in a debt payment that's over $3 million into, you know, the next year. But that's included in these numbers here and these projections.
Okay. That's good to know. All right. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, Jason. So, looking at the chart on the first page of the memo-
Yep.
Which says, "Upper limit FY26 under expenses and transfers out." And it says, "Percent change for town department and fixed costs, 8.78%."
Correct.
What is that in relation to the 5% that you were mentioning?
Well, that's the 5% plus the fixed costs that come in as, you know, some of the major budget drivers, like, like health insurance and the retirement assessment.
Okay. So, of the 8.78, five of that is the department?
Right. That would reflect the 5.17% upper limit for departmental-
Right. And then level services is 7.47.
Correct.
Not a whole lot of room.
Correct. So, the level services include much lower departmental requests than 5%, but it also includes the health insurance and the other fixed costs that I was just laying out.
Okay. So, roughly of the 7.47 of a level service, how much of that is broken between fixed and town department? Do you know roughly? Not to put you on the spot. Sorry. Well, I did put you on the spot. And if you don't know that right now, that's fine. I don't want to get hung up on it.
So, I-
I guess my-
Of that number, of that 30 million number, approximately half of it is the departmental requests or a bit more than half of it is the departmental requests?
Okay.
If that helps put that in perspective at all.
And then hitting that, those upper limits is what's going to put us to override territory a lot sooner than what was discussed at the economics summit, which was, I think, we were projecting out maybe early 2030s as opposed to-
Well, I think the date was, was 20, definitely 28.
Was 28?
Yeah. 28 would be where some relief would be, need to be stopped from Proposition 2.5.
With these numbers or was that at the economics summit?
At the economics summit. It was 28. If we use the entirety of the levy capacity in, say, the upper limit scenario that is in that column, it would be an override in 27 or Proposition 2.5 or drastic cuts.
Right. So, overrides for normal, not for projects, but for normal operating budgets, fixed costs and everything, not just for large projects.
Or strategic choice of funding the capital plan with debt.
Right. Okay.
So, that's, that's next year then for 27 because this is 26, we go into April, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And I guess I was going to go over this in reports, but it kind of steals, I guess, the thunder a little bit or bring it up now that from the, from the school committee, I think the superintendent was going to propose at the next school committee meeting for the K through 8, a level services budget at a 3.74%.
Correct. And that's built into these numbers.
And that's built into the-
Into the school's budget.
Into that school line.
Yeah.
That's in the, okay, and that's in the five and the four. Okay.
Yeah. So, the K to 8 budget, they're reduced or level service budget that came in lower than originally projected, that's built into here. What's not is, I think it's the overall 5. something percent for the high school assessment that I don't think we know all of the details yet. So, that, these numbers are involving. So, they'll be in this territory, but we don't have all of the exact numbers yet.
And does this type of scenario and these numbers affect us going out to get the bonding for the fire station before town meeting?
Well, we'll be subject to a ratings call and I'm sure the last question's about what direction you're in. And I don't think that it would be held against us because we're no different than a lot of other communities out there. But having a plan, having financial policies and sticking to them are what's key to upholding your bond rating typically.
Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome. Julian?
So, Jason, you mentioned the fire station bond.
Yep.
Has it been decided whether it's 20 years or 30 years?
Oh, it's going to be 30 years.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I think overwhelmingly, you know, we've looked at both sets of numbers, but it's a significant project and it's got a life, a long lifespan. And 30 years would be, you know, how we would finance that.
Because we did talk about 20 years at some point, I think.
I think, yeah, I think the hope was that rates would drop and I don't think they have not materialized that way.
I don't think it would be realistic to issue a 20-year bond for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Laura, did you have anything? Okay. Where does the school transportation get modeled in this? Is that split between the K to 8 and the Algonquin or the regional or is that somewhere else?
Right. It's in both budgets.
Okay.
So, that's one thing that is why the assessments are harder to know that number ahead of time because they're affected by the transportation reimbursements that come through the state budget. So, I think that they're working on updating their budget models based on numbers that got released on Thursday.
Yeah. Yeah. And from what I understand, everyone's expecting school transportation to be a big uptick. I believe they went out to bid and then rejected all bids because they were so high and then they were thinking about-
And by all, I think there were two.
Yeah. Well, they'll never get more than two. And, but they were significantly higher. So, I think they're giving the whole process some thought to see if they can come up with a less expensive way of doing transportation and then go out to bid on that. And I know that's something a lot of towns are dealing with right now. I'm not going to put you on the spot for specifics, but are there departments that are requesting new positions?
Well, yeah, there were departments requesting new positions as part of the more wish list budget.
Okay.
But obviously, no new positions would be included in a level service budget.
Service budget, right. Yeah. I think we all recognize, last year was a bit of a correction year of backfilling some positions that were of high need that hadn't been addressed. This year, we know that the big driver of tax increase is going to be the fire station project. And, you know, I think we should all, you know, give some serious thought to keeping the operating budget increases as small as possible so we don't have a double whammy of both the capital increase, the debt increase on the fire station and at the same time that we're adding another, you know, five or six or seven new positions. I, you know, appreciate looking at that. I think it would be a good idea if there are any, any positions or new initiatives that, you know, I'll ask Diane to maybe, you know, make mention to Stephanie to think about putting that on our next agenda so we can start to walk through any budgetary changes that might be in the works so we can start to give some thought to that sooner rather than later. If it's all level service, we can see if that's appropriate also. But, you know, hopefully, we can keep that within, you know, within a 3% range and not a 5% range and see where we are. I appreciate that these are all moving targets. I know that you just got all the state aid numbers within the last couple of days and more will be coming as it, as the budget navigates its way through the legislature. But I appreciate the early peek on this.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Jason.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have adoption of a 2.5 ton heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Summer Street from South Street to Main Street. The agenda does say DPW Director Scott Sharpton-Tierre. Scott's under the weather, as I was informed a little bit before the meeting, so he cannot join us. But I know that, you know, we're certainly aware of this because it was just a couple meetings ago that we requested this and the DOT turned this around pretty quickly. I think there's a memo, a memo in our packet. Yes, there is.
Yeah.
So, I think we all have this. It's a pretty simple form. Because we discussed this so recently, Scott was hoping that we didn't have any new questions. We can postpone this if people feel the need to postpone to get them in here for some Q and A. Phil?
Scott feels better.
Yeah. Absolutely. Okay. Are we ready to move ahead on this or?
So, how, like, how soon will this take effect is my other question. And that might have been written in this. I'm sorry, I didn't see the date.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that.
This is going to go back to the state.
I can follow up with that though.
Yeah. I mean, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
And then, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is there going to be a notification to the residents that have requested this? Do we have any, like, or they'll just see it when the sign shows up? Because I know there was a lot of interest.
As well.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to add extra work, but-
I will take a look and see if I can find, I mean, any emails that we got in, we'd be able to identify and we certainly had some phone calls or, you know, in-person comments that night when this was out there. I think it would be pretty easy to notify them.
The paper will probably pick up on our discussion.
Yes. I think so.
I didn't want to say that I, when reading the letter, it seemed to be very simple. It wasn't a lot of caveats or problems that they anticipated. It just says, "Both of our District 3 Traffic Engineering Section and our Boston Office Regulations Section are in agreement with the town that an HCVE is warranted on Summer Street, period." Very simple.
Very simple. Yeah. There's nice, no, no changes.
Yeah.
They just, they saw the data. I mean, the data backed it up.
Right. Right. In advance, so.
So, that was that. All right. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I just happen to have a motion for this. I move the board vote to adopt a 2.5 ton heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Summer Street from South Street to Main and to amend the town code, Section 9-108, adopted March 3, 1970, and subsequent amendments thereto, as referenced in the packet.
Second.
Motion made by Lisa, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion?
Do we sign this tonight?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Hi.
I see that as unanimous in favor. Truck exclusion is approved. Thank you very much to the residents who campaigned for this. Good change. Next up, we have request for approval of ambulance fee adjustments. Hey, look at that. Fire chief, Dave Beranty, come on up.
It's happening to be hanging out.
Thank you for being patient with us tonight.
No. I was watching the game. No, I wasn't watching. As tempting as it was to watch the Celtics, I wasn't watching it. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So, last year, I came in front of you to discuss the increase in Medicare. Last year was a 4.76%. When I first came here, I sat down in front of the board. We had some discussions and we, we made a fiscal decision at that time to set a policy. So, our fees would always be Medicare plus 200%. So, every time Medicare goes up, I come in front of you and say, okay, Medicare went up, it's time to increase our fees to match, to keep with the 200% Medicare plus 2%. This year, they're going up 2.4%, a much more conservative amount. That was a number that I put in the package I sent to you and I showed you the current and the proposed fees. Just to give you a little idea of how these numbers work, because I really think it's important for you guys to understand, you know, how we bill, what we're getting, what we're writing off. I think that's really important for you guys. So, part of our policy when we made that Medicare plus 200% was that we wouldn't balance bill Northborough residents. So, if Northborough residents insurance covers 80%- So if Northborough residents insurance covers 80% of their bill, and they get, they're getting balanced billed 20%, that gets written off. We, we did set some parameters, so if someone has no insurance, or they're paying incredibly low rates because they want a really high deductible, you know, high deductible, they do get balanced billed because everyone else, everyone else is bearing the, the pressure of that. So as an example, and I read the numbers this morning. I have, we have waived $83,000 of balanced billing or waivers this year, or in 2024, for Northborough residents. We've waived $56,000 for other residents. Now, some of those are based on, they've passed, so they no longer have insurance, so we're not going to get any money from them. They're out of state, there's, there's different reasons for those waivers. So it's important, so that, you know, that, that's, that's $140,000 that we've waived for that. On top of that, at the same time we made this decision, we decided to start sending stuff to collections. And again, what goes to collections are those that we, out-of-town people. Or those Northborough people who have no insurance and just choose to ignore the, the bills they get. That was $194,000 we've canceled out of there.
Is that in, I'm sorry, is that in addition to?
Total of $334,359. And what happens with that is, so we send X, we, we, depending on, on, on what the, what the residence is, what the balance is, we send that over to our collection agency. The collection agency then has certain steps to go through. And they notify them, the people, and they follow so many things, and they do this, but they can only get to a certain point. When they get to that point, they tell us we've exhausted all, all of our, all of our means to try and get this money. That can even be a resident or someone calling up and saying, do not call me anymore, this is a cease and desist. As soon as they do that, they're done, they can no longer collect. So that's what we've written off so far this year. A large portion of money. Luckily, we've billed this year, we billed in, in 2024, and this just, okay, this is, this is interesting. So I've talked to you guys before about allowable, right? So 2024, from 1/1/24 to 11/30/24, so trips that occurred in that time period, $2,075,830, that was what we billed. What was allowable was $905,000. To give you an example, Medicare, we billed $1,240,340, they allowed $373,000. So that's the purpose of coming in and saying, this is why we do Medicare plus 200%. The burden goes to the insurance company. If you're a resident of town and you can't pay, you don't get balanced billed. If you're not a resident of town, and that's why I send you guys, you know, every month when I send you the report, I send you that list to show you how many of those transports are out-of-town transports. And those ALS transports are a lot higher than the BLS transports, which is why I show you that breakdown as well. So there's a lot of, there's a, a lot of, of, of money going, going around here. Interestingly, we made that change last year. In 2023, in that same period, we billed $1,600. So by the, just by that 4% change in our increase in call volume, we increased by 400, $600,000 in our billing, it's crazy, crazy. So I, I wanted you to have that background because I feel it's important for you to have those numbers. Any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions?
How much do you, how much does your collections cost you, like percentage of what you're unable to collect, or how, what's the balance?
So the way it works is, is, well, there's, there's two different things, right? If it goes to our regular billing company, ComStar, there's a 3% charge, right? So whatever they collect, they get X percent. I think it's, it's either three or 4%, I'd have to look it up because it, it changed not too long ago. So whatever they collect, if they don't collect, they don't get the money, right? So if they don't collect, it's, they don't make anything. And if it comes to us, we then send it to our, our, our collections agency, they get a higher percentage. And I'm, I'm not going to specify that, I don't know what that is off the top of my head, I don't want to spit that out, but they get a higher percent of that. So that, that, that billing company gets around 3% or 4% of whatever they collect.
Okay, but then the collection agency, whether or not they collect, they get a certain.
Nope, they only get what they collect.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm. So as an example, and I made sure I brought it with me, let me find it. Okay, I got them, it's not them. I have too many papers here. Hey, there. So they collected year-to-date $9,004.
The collection agency.
That's what they were able to collect. Out of the $96,790 we gave them to collect, they collected $9,004.
Should we, should we look for another collection agency?
No, no, it's, it's, this is actually one many departments use.
Really?
Yeah, I can tell you, when I was up in New Hampshire, departments even went to the point they started taking people to small claims court. One of the things we're starting to have issues with, we're having greater issues with insurance companies. So insurance companies have always played this game, sign a contract with us and we'll give you 100%. Well, yes, but the contracts are for this much money as opposed to what we're actually billing, right? So we have insurance companies now are, are paying their, what they feel is ordinary and customary in telling their client, you go take care, tell the town that we're not paying anymore. So then we tell the client, and, and, and ComStar works with us, they tell us, no, no, no. Tell the client to go back and tell their insurance company, yes, you will pay, and you know what happens? They pay. So there's those extra steps we have to go through, and it's crazy, it, it really is. But then say, no, they will pay, you just have to call them, but some people don't want to, they don't want to pick up the phone and call their, you're paying their insurance company, give them a call. They give them a call, and, and inevitably, some of them pay. Some of them don't, they have their ordinary customary, and that's what they pay, and that's what it is. And, and, and we have to write off the balance bill if it's a Northborough resident. But it's, it's an interesting, it really is, for sure.
I, I do think that these rate increases are reasonable, and I was looking at what other Massachusetts towns are doing, and I think we're still on the lower.
We, we are, in fact, ju- just to give you some numbers, and, and I always like to bring this with me. So our, 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 our company, ComStar, says you could bill up to $2,412 for an ALS one. And we are, we are recommending significantly less than 1,700.
1,500 or 1,600?
Right, right, because we want to stay within the realm of realistic as opposed to, these are privates. Privates can charge whatever they darn well want, and they do. We don't, we just, we, we don't make enough money to even offset where you, but this money is used for a lot of different things. It goes into our revolving account, and it covers a lot of things, helps save a lot of money off of the insurance, off the taxes because we direct charge almost $400,000 right to it, first of the year.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Yeah, Chief, is there any, from, I mean, your experience in, in, in dealing with this, is there something legislatively, you know, we're going to have legisla-, you know, discussion about our, with our legislatures about priorities? Is there something that on a, on, on the state level that could be done? You know, obviously, what can be done and what should be done is different, or, you know, or what will be done and what should be done, but what, you know.
Answer, Michael, is yes, there is. And Fire Chiefs Association of Mass, FCAM, has been pushing for years for, to say, okay, here's the deal. You can tell us, we can't increase fees by more than 2% a year, we're okay with that. But you tell the insurance companies, they have to pay what we bill them. And that has been going back and forth from house to, you know, from house to house, and eventually running out of time. And I, so, but since I've been here, I hit my nine-year mark, was two days ago. Since I've been here, I, that's been on almost every FCAM legislative update that we get, that's, you know, we're trying this again, and it always ends up being kind of lost in the dust of everything else. So they, at one point in time, wanted to hold us to the same accountability that they hold hospitals. So if a hospital, if, if they have a Medicare patient, and they discharge that patient, and that patient comes back in with a certain amount of time for that same, that same thing, hospitals can't bill them. Because they, the idea is they discharged them too soon, or they didn't, right? They wanted to hold us, the state wanted to hold ambulance services to that same, that same standard. We're like, hang on, we're, we're just treating and transporting, we can't make them better, we, we, we try to keep them alive till we get them there, right? So we fought that, and we, we, we won that one. When I say we, I meant, I meant the, the Chiefs Association. So it is there, we've always tried to do it. At one point in time, we actually put that on our priorities because we really had a big push. But it's kind of fallen behind now, there's other things that have taken priorities, but it's always there.
Thank you. Unless there are any other questions, I will enter.
I just have one, how many, do we have two or three ambulances that we use to service now?
So right this minute, we have two in service.
Okay.
Our, our standard is three, is to have three ambulances. Two are in service, the third is a mechanical backup. Because that way, we can always keep two in service when one goes up, when, when, when one goes out. But we had two of them, older ones just died, they weren't worth putting the money into. We bought a used one from Westboro. We've had to put a couple of dollars into it, but nothing terrible. Our new one should be in by the end of this month. Or, that's what they tell me, today's the 26th, right, 26th? So it should be in by the end of the month, first week of February.
Okay, so, but it is, it's basically the two that we utilize to collect, to collect our people and take them where they need to go.
And mutual aid.
And mutual aid, yeah. And then the third one isn't really used?
Well, the third one is a mechanical backup, but, but it's staffed fully at the ALS level, meaning if we had to put people in it and transport, we could. So one of the things we're, we're looking at with this new, with a safer grant, is that with the extra people, we may be able to keep that in service as opposed to just a mechanical spare. So it wouldn't be staffed, and it wouldn't be a primary unit, but in the case that we get multiple, and, and we can staff it, then we could roll it. A good example is the other morning, we had four, caught four or five calls within 30 minutes. And I was at a motor vehicle accident by myself with Westboro coming, because everyone else was tied up all over the place. Because we just didn't have enough staffing to cover everything.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, unless there are any other questions, I will entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to increase the ambulance fees effective March 1st, 2025, as presented by Fire Chief Parenti and further outlined in this memorandum, included in the January 27th, 2025 meeting packet as follows. BLS emergency base rate from $1,465 to $1,500. ALS non-emergency base rate from $1,098 to $1,125. ALS one emergency base rate from $1,739 to $1,781. ALS two emergency base rate from $2,516 to $2,577. Mileage from $36 to $39.
Second.
Okay, motion made by. Made very well.
What did I do to the chair?
You won the lottery on that one. Motion made by Mike, seconded by Laura, any other discussion? All those in favor, say? Hi.
Hi.
I see that as unanimous in favor.
Since I'm here in front, I just wanted to tell you, we got the $19,000 safer, the DFS grant.
Okay.
We, we found that out two days ago.
Great, great.
Thanks, Chief.
Good. Thank you very much. Next up, we have continued discussion on legislative priorities. So there's a memo in here from Steph on legislative update, which lists out a lot of details from the governor's budget. Is there anything that you wanted to review, or is this more primarily for informational?
Just information.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, last, I think it was last Wednesday, the governor released the draft, it was Thursday, the draft budget, or, and then called House One, even though it comes from the governor, weird naming. And then on Friday, she spoke with the Lieutenant Governor at the MMA Conference. I was there, Diane, Diane was there, Mike came just a little bit later in the day. And they primarily detailed the Municipal Empowerment Act, which they were filing, again, similar to last year, but, but revamped a little bit for this year of a whole bunch of, of detailed changes that the governor is proposing, some of which, you know, hit close to home, such as making hybrid and remote meetings permanent, increasing Chapter 90 money, increasing funding specifically for dealing with culverts, which we have dealt with a couple of times, which we know are very expensive. I think culvert's got a big round of applause in the audience. Similar to double polls last year was the thing that the governor said that got a lot of applause, and, you know, these are the exciting things that you get at a conference like this. So, so there were, there were, I think, some very, very good things in that. An item that we have discussed previously, that I know, Julianne, you've expressed interest in your traffic cameras. So currently, you need to ask for legislative permission in many areas to get traffic cameras, speed cameras, is, is what the governor termed them. She's proposing making that just a standard that you just, you just put them in. I don't know, if you put them in, you might have to adopt something locally, but you don't have to go through the legislature for a special act to, to get those done. She thinks that those are, those are, should be a tool in our belt. So that would make, if that goes forward, that would make that process for approval a lot easier.
Are those cameras only for traffic speeds?
She called them speed cameras, that's all, that's all I know. A lot of those details from that, at least as of this morning, hadn't been released. I haven't looked later today. Usually, a couple of days after that speech, there are more detailed versions of the bills that start to be published on the governor's website. So we'll see that. That was not in last year's Municipal Empowerment Act, so it's, it's something new from her this year.
Because, I mean, we do have, we still have issues of things happening with destruction. So is that a separate, is that a separate?
Like surveillance cameras?
Yeah, like surveillance cameras.
Yeah, so this is for the purpose of issuing traffic citations.
Enforcement.
Yeah. Yeah, so it, it, the way, I implied it because it was stated as speed cameras, that it would be for speeding through an intersection, for example, as opposed to going through a red light.
Oh. Because usually, I mean, a lot of it, they use for.
Yeah, again, again, I'm just, I, I'm totally basing that off the phrasing that was used carefully in the presentation. So that's all I know on that. And she spoke about some details about that, about it would be, you know, fines, but not necessarily points because it's a different way of assessing fines. You know, there's, you know, pros and cons, but it'll, it'll be what it'll be. But as I said, if it goes through, it will give us another tool we could consider using.
One more question about that, are they, are they meant to be put in a stationary position and only that, like at certain lights or at certain places only there, or can it be used in different locations?
I don't know the answer to that. Yeah, we'll have to look at the bill.
An enforcement drone, is what you're thinking of.
Ooh, an enforcement drone.
We use that $10,000 drone we just used for the police department. Slide it around, have them just drop, drop the tickets in somebody's house.
Have them gotten stopped halfway here?
All right. So Diane put together a bulleted list on legislative priorities. You know, we had talked about, we've used the same format of the letter year after year after year. It's quite lengthy. Maybe rethink, focus on the bullets and let Diane write, you know, a sentence for each one. Because our legislators are smart enough to know what we mean by those things. So, so Diane put together this memo that's in our packet on all of the items that we've discussed thus far. And this is an opportune time to, you know, add something or delete something.
So this is, these are in addition to what Steph had given us?
What Steph gave us was not legislative priorities, that's a summary from the governor's office on the House One budget.
Okay.
So that was that memo that's in our packet dated the 23rd of January. So this is more, that was for awareness. This memo, which is dated the 22nd, legislative priorities update, these are topics that we want to discuss with our legislatures that we want to ask them to support.
I liked Mike's idea about mentioning something about the Fire Chiefs Association request that, that, you know, that, that when they, when they are, they're, they have a cap on how much they can increase ambulance charges, but the insurance companies don't, and that just doesn't really seem fair. So if we could address that somehow, I think.
Okay.
Or lend support to the fires.
Yeah, I was, thank you, Julianne, yeah, I was going to mention if, if we could add in what the chief discussed as something worth to go over with our representatives and state senator.
Good.
Do we have to say how much, much of an earmark we want? Do we say we want a million?
Maybe put something in there regarding the overall cost, you know, the annual cost that we anticipate, or, you know, we, you know, we have hi- high demand on installing a sidewalk on Maple Street, and we expect that to be in the, you know, million and a half dollar range or some, you know, you know. slightly better than make up a number, because for some of these, we don't have raw dollars yet. I wouldn't, you know, expect that we'd get million dollar earmarks through this. But, um, you know, usually, they're in the tens of thousands of dollars. But, sometimes, we do better than that.
So, Steph had asked a question about, sorry, I don't know if I'm jumping to the right thing, about the cybersecurity, um, item that I had mentioned. I don't know how we can do this, but, is there a specific area? I'm just looking for ways, if there's funding, to enhance our security, to protect us against ransomware attacks. I don't know if that's something that's currently available as a legislative priority. I'm sure it's gotta be something that's on everyone's radar.
Yeah, I, I, the state provides a significant amount of money.
Okay.
As it is. Whether it's enough, I don't know. That might be something that Steph could talk to Dave Kane.
Yeah.
And say, hey, is there a bill floating out there? Is there a grant program? Is, is there?
Sorry, is that the clarification she had asked for?
Yep, yep, I had asked for that, yep.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, easy. Thank you.
What's the create a municipal and public safety building authority?
So, right now, um, there's a school building authority that exists to help towns build schools, both financially and as far as professional oversight. There's also one for libraries. They do not exist for anything else. So, if we want to build, obviously, a fire station, there's no, either financial aid from the state or professional guidance. So, we, we are creating it unto ourself, um, as a neighboring town would be creating it unto theirselves, where, going through a school building process, you're working with the school building authority, that you can very easily look at all, you know, prior documents. There are a lot of standards that they set, extensive documentation, extensive history, cost per square foot, things that work well, things that don't. I, I dream of a time that we would get fifty percent reimbursement on public safety buildings, DPW buildings, and everything else. That's not happening. But, I really think, even without the money, there's tremendous money to be saved by having a lot more professional guidance from the state. Having gone through a few school building projects that the MSBA, they provide a lot of expertise for free. That saves you money and gets you a better end result. I would really like to see that. You know, and, we asked for that last year, I think it's probably been in there for a couple of years.
Yeah, it has.
It's, you know, I, there's a bill filed every year for it, it never goes anywhere. My perspective is, even without the money, it's a great idea.
You know, the towns are probably asking for the same thing, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, it would be tremendously helpful. Obviously, it wouldn't help with our fire station project, but it would help with the next municipal project, whether it be town hall, or a DPW garage update, or anything else, whatever, whatever comes next on the municipal side. It would be very helpful with. One of the items in the budget is a nice increase to Chapter Ninety. So, that's one of the items on here, it's probably mentioned in Steph's memo.
Two?
That, yeah, it's, for the last several years, Chapter Ninety statewide has been two hundred million dollars, and then they sweeten it up a little bit along the road, sometimes adding as much as a hundred million dollars. The governor is proposing that the base is three hundred million now. So, the base start better, base, basically, it basically starts at the best year that it's been in recent years. And then, from there, sometimes, as it goes through the legislature, they even add a little bit more to it. So, that's relative to providing an annual cost escalation, which is still a good thing. That's, you know, every year, they just automatically add four percent to the base for Chapter Ninety. Obviously, we don't get all of the three hundred million dollars, we get a little piece of it. But, anything that's increased statewide helps us.
I remember, we had a discussion about the fair share bill, the, the fair share tax.
Yeah.
And, um, we were gonna, I think you made some statements about it, Mike, that we were going to ask that it, it be used for education and, and roads. And, because, was, was there talk at the, at the meeting about a big chunk of that money going to MBTA?
It was mentioned a couple times. It wasn't discussion, but I believe it was mentioned about, there, there is, I think, a bill out there to, yeah, to the fair share, or millionaire's tax, or whatever you wanna call it, to, I think, at least half of it, to go to the MBTA, right?
Sounds right.
But, that wasn't what the original, uh, request to, to create it was for, wasn't it for education?
Right, it was for, like, education. And then, I think it was like, oh, and other stuff. It was like, oh, what could that be? You know? One of those things? And now, this is the other stuff, you know?
Yeah.
For lack of a better explanation.
So, we would be asking for them to keep it for what it was raised for?
Well, I mean, I.
I mean, technically, they might have, it might have been education and transportation, which would then be.
Well, yeah, if it was those two, wow, oh, right, 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 who was thinking that?
My, I guess my, and maybe it's, I could, you know, use more information on it, but sort of pouring more money onto the MBTA, is that the best use of those resources? I, I don't know. You know, anecdotally, I don't, I don't think so. And I talked to a lot of other people.
Yeah, if they wanted to find more regional transportation, like something that we talked about earlier, without having be an assessment.
Right. Or if they wanna put a coat of paint on the Westboro one, right?
Yes. Because I, I rode that back and forth to get to the MMA Conference. That Westboro Station's in bad shape. Wow, that looks sad.
Wow.
Yeah. That's an aside, but yeah.
This is important, people know.
But, I think it would benefit Northborough if more of that money went towards education and maybe other transportation than just the MBTA.
Yes.
There's a lot of other communities across the Commonwealth that don't come near the MBTA.
Right, right.
So, maybe, make sure that, that transportation initiatives from that money are used for things that would benefit Northborough directly.
It's, that it's more equitable, like, like you said. You know, it's, it's the eastern part of the state that's gonna benefit from MBTA, and, and let's, you know, let's make the Fair Share Act fair.
One of the, regarding like our fixed costs, like, I know with the, with the pensions, originally, it was like a twenty-thirty full funding, um, window that, that difference, that systems had to meet. I think that got, for some systems, pushed out to twenty-forty. I don't know if that's, applies to us or the Worcester Regional System that we report up to. But, you know, that, I, I don't have that number off the top of my head or written down, but I would assume if there was a even wider window on, on funding that pension liability, that would only help towns like ours with our fixed costs, and being able to have a schedule and a plan to get there, maybe over a wider window. We may not be able to get there anyway, and this, they'll have to figure something out regardless. But, you know, these, these fixed costs that we have, which are, you know, a large portion of, you know, pension and benefits and stuff like that, being able to maybe have more control over it, spread it out a little bit longer, be more realistic, that where some systems can meet that funding, you know, you know, smaller towns may not, uh, be able to have the ability to do that. And so, maybe some ability for a town like ours to, to spread out that, that liability a little bit longer, help control our fixed costs.
I like that. Said by someone that actually knows what he's talking about with that, so thank you.
Just enough to say that. Don't question me any further.
It might be helpful if, if you, you, the two of you could maybe work together as a way of.
Sure.
Turning that into a bullet point.
Yeah.
Got a couple of things. The hybrid and remote meeting capability expires at the end of March. The governor's budget, you know, the budget starts July first, if they even approve it in time. So, there's a window there. I fully anticipate that the legislator will deal with it one way or the other. I wanna make sure that they deal with it so that there isn't this last minute rush, like we, we had, have had the last couple of rollover times with this, where we are posting meetings in person, because they have to be in person, because the law's gonna expire, and then they expire, and then we can change it, and it's really hard to manage that, so.
Add it to the list?
Yes. Yeah, that, that should be added to the list, just, you know, deal with the, the hybrid and remote meeting capability under the open meeting law before expiration. Whether it be permanent, or whether it be another temporary extension until they figure out what they want to. Everyone wants it to be permanent. That's gonna happen. But.
Let's do it.
Last, they figured it out, last they were talking about it, they were fighting over the language, between the House, House wanted to do it one way, Senate another way. So, they just kicked the cannon down the road, and here's the can. I mentioned the speeding cameras. Something that was discussed statewide a number of years ago, as health insurance was raising, was really going up the last time, was the possibility of exempting it from Prop two and a half. It didn't really go anywhere. But, I think it's, you know, worth having that conversation. The, the thought is, Prop two and a half exists, you know, to keep your, your levy limit increase, your, basically, your property taxes increasing at two and a half percent, you know, with a lot of fuzzy math involved. When there was something year after year after year increasing at, you know, eight, ten, twelve percent, it's hard to do anything else. So.
Yes, but it, if you, if you exempt it, it doesn't give us an incentive to work to keep those costs down.
Agreed.
I mean, we.
Well, you, it's still tax money, so you, you're still doing it competitively.
I, I think I'd rather approach it from the other way of trying to keep.
Yeah.
Keep the costs down and work with the insurance companies to.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah, maybe a, I don't know what, what bills are out there, what discussions are there for.
Good question.
You know, I mean, there's, there's talk of, you know, having single payer in Massachusetts. Would that save us money, not save us money? I don't know.
My fear with excluding it is that we're still, we're gonna negatively impact the residents and taxpayers.
Yeah. Yeah, there are, there are discussions that we will have if we ever get to the point where we are bumping up against the levy limit and dealing with the ramifications of that. So, I'm okay holding off on that. And I think it would be good to have a, a bullet on here to support the Governor's Municipal Empowerment Act, because it contains so many good things. Not absolutely everything in that list would benefit Northborough, a lot of them would. It covers some of the other things that we're talking about in here, too.
So, just to get back to the sentence in response to Member Hersch's interest in automated traffic enforcement, now that you've talked about it.
Yeah.
Can that also now bullet that as a?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think we, we, I think agreed that the, I mean, that's part of the Municipal Empowerment Act is, are the speeding cameras. Or, that might even be in the budget, one or the other. But, I think having it as a bullet is a good thing.
Yeah, because at least it just pulls it out, as opposed to, maybe. And did, Laura, what did you come, what was your, what was the definitive on the, the cybersecurity?
We're just gonna check with David Kane and see if there's any legislative acts available right now that he's aware of that we would be a good fit for.
Okay, and then come back and put that on.
The library one, did you check with the library to see if that's still an active request, or?
It is.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Good. Did anyone have anything else that they wanted to add now? So, I think our next meeting, we are scheduled to finalize that letter.
Yes, I will have a draft letter for you.
So, this would be the best time to add anything. If somebody thinks of something between this meeting and the next one, it can still be sent to Diane.
Oh, okay, good.
But, um, you know, and then we would discuss that item.
Well, certainly, like the implement the threshold for application of prevailing wage rates. What is the threshold going to be, and, and how do you, how do you detail that in such a way that?
I, I could see if Scott can help me with that a little bit. I mean, that's a good question.
Well, I don't.
Like a hundred thousand or something currently?
I don't really know.
Something like that, yeah.
So, my understanding was, like, if, if the project is small and it's less than fifty thousand?
Maybe it is that small, you know?
It's, um, it, you don't have to use prevailing wage.
Right.
But, anything over that. And I think our request is that we bump that up to half a million.
Right, right.
Well, because, yeah, I mean, what doesn't cost a half million to a million dollars? You know, I mean, we wanna be fair to people and pay them a, a fair wage, but we also have a.
I mean, uh, you know.
Coming up on a, on a, on a ceiling next year.
A design can cost a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah. So, our feasibility study for Paisley Schools, nine hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Yeah.
So, so maybe put it in a way of, of, I don't know, community size, you know, to be able to get a, you've gotta do some sort of a formula.
Or index for construction and wage, or inflation? You know, when was the last time it was raised, and?
Yeah, I couldn't imagine that they would vary it by town. They're, they'll set a dollar amount, but it would be good if there was an index attached to it.
Yeah, if it was indexed periodically, it would be at least fair.
Yeah, fifty thousand dollars is not, not too helpful. Those are really the tiniest of municipal projects.
Right.
You know, I'd hope at least two fifty, if not five hundred, would be a, a better threshold.
Yeah. At least that. And, what I understand is, we have to, we have to pay somebody to now write RFPs. And part of those RFPs are a whole list of what these rates are, among other, just, among other than the blueprint of what you're gonna do. So, almost half this packet usually is prevailing wage. So, in changing that limit, would it change, obviously, it would reduce the amount of information that would have to be in an RFP, correct?
I'd have to look into that.
Yeah, the, the wage sheet for, for, you know, if you expect the project to be under whatever the new threshold is, you wouldn't have to get the wage sheet.
Right. And, I'm trying to think of another way of making it palatable. I mean, how does the state benefit by keeping that threshold low? Do they make anything? Do they get a kickback? I mean, what happens, the, the prevailing wage puts so much additional cost to whatever we're doing.
Yeah.
That it's not, it's not even feasible anymore to do anything, because you're like, whoa, it costs me more money just to prepare the package than it is anything else.
I don't think prevailing wage adds much cost to preparing the package, because, um, when you're, when you know you're at that threshold, um, you, the, whoever's putting together the RFP makes a list of the trades that are expected to be used, sends a letter, sends an email, I'm sure, to the state. And the state responds and says, by the way, plumbers, you're going to pay X dollars per hour. Drywall, you're gonna pay X dollars per hour, et cetera. And then, that, that sheet then gets inserted into the RFP. So, there's not, there's not a lot of added work to do that. There's a lot of added expense.
Right, it's the per hour, per line.
Oh, yeah. Some of those are scary.
And I also noticed, I mean, even when they did the Brigham Street Cemetery, there was a whole lot of, there was three hundred pages for an RFP, for taking trees down.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of that is just contract law and, and the require, because you're, when you're doing something that is lowest cost, you have to be very, very, very specific with what you want, because someone out there is gonna bid and not follow the, they're gonna, they're gonna follow the contract the way it's worded, not what you think should happen.
Right.
So, that's why, I mean, the, the fire station bid spec is gonna be like fifteen hundred pages.
Well, and that's, well, those, those are kinda two different things. I mean.
Yeah, but.
A cemetery's got trees, right? There's no screws involved, there's nothing. I mean, you're taking a tree down, you're taking a tree away.
Yeah.
Three hundred pages.
Yeah, wouldn't surprise me.
I've seen it. It's just like, it's crazy.
Yeah.
And you're like, how?
How many trees did you have to take down for that?
Right, that amount of money. And even that shouldn't.
Ten pages for a tree.
Right? I mean, there were ninety, ninety trees.
Yeah, I don't.
But, the point is, is like, why would, and, and, you know, because, what is it? Weston and Sampson are doing the RFP on that, so how much did that cost? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't, I don't know how to, how to rectify that in a, in a bullet for legislative priorities. You know, you could say simplify procurement process or something like that, but that's.
Well, they don't probably care, though, do they? Do they, do they really care how the procurement process is done?
Well, that's what we're talking about.
The money.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it would be nice if it was simpler, but at the same time, that protects the taxpayer, because you're gonna get what we're, you know, what we're paying for. And, um, yeah, you know, thinking way outside the box, there might be standardized contracts that they could have more of, or something like that, um, where you wouldn't have to prepare something, and you could just say, instead of including the three hundred pages, you could just say, um, you know, see, see state bid spec number three, four, five. Do it here. I don't know.
Yeah, okay, that's, it's more the money than I'm thinking.
All right. Anybody else have anything else to? Anybody else have anything else to add or, or modify on the legislative priorities?
Thanks.
Okay, so we will have the letter by our next meeting.
I just have a question during this meeting. We'll be taking public comment.
Yes.
So, so if a resident wants to address the legislators, that's a good time.
Absolutely.
They, um, excuse me, they used to actually hold office hours.
Office hours.
Yeah.
Um, and we can extend that invite if they wish to.
Yeah, hold office hours just before the meeting or something. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good idea. Next up on our agenda, we have a discussion of the reorganization process. So I asked council, I, through, through Steph, I asked council to, to look into our charter bylaws, state laws and things like that because there have been some questions as far as, you know, how long can a, can one person be in one position on the board? Council couldn't find anything that, that restricted that essentially, and Diane is the one who spoke with council, not me, so, you know, say, say something if I'm not saying anything incorrectly. There's no state statute that provides that a board must reorganize after a local election, but most do. We have a weird quirk in our bylaws that it says May first is when we reorganize. That is probably left over from when, I'll bet elections used to be in April, once upon a time, and then we changed the election date, but never changed the reorg date. So we've been reorganizing after each election, um, which is the normal way you should do it. So in the recodification that the town clerk is working through, hopefully they will catch that and we can amend that. Um, uh, reorganization does not require you to change anything, it just means you make a decision on who's going to be in the, in the different, three different seats for the following year. We have nothing in our bylaws, there's nothing in the charter, anything else that has any limit on how many years any one person could be in any one position. I was curious, after I got that, I was curious, statewide, could we find out anything? So I contacted the program coordinator at the MMA, this is before the conference, woman Annika Craig, and asked her, you know, are you aware of anything? So she spoke with other staff members, they weren't aware of any, any restriction anywhere. So they went out to the Board of Directors of the MMA, which are all, of the Massachusetts Select Board Association, which are all select board members, in some cases retired select board members. The only limitation that they could find is the town, this was new to me, the town of Lexington does have a bylaw that says, sets a maximum of three years, three consecutive years for the same person being chair. Otherwise, they couldn't find any limits at all. While I was at the conference, I, as Mike knows, we spoke with a lot of people in a lot of other towns, and that was a question I would ask because this is a, a topic of conversation. Um, I spoke with the Boylston Town Administrator, she said that there was one member there up until a couple of years ago that served, she couldn't remember, it was either ten or eleven years, consecutive years as chair. Um, the, in the town of Easton, I spoke with, with that select board chair, she's currently in her eighth consecutive year as chair. Uh, she's also on one of, I think, the Women in Government Group within the MMA, um, she's.
Yeah, she led a, a section of the, like, the new select board training that I had attended.
Oh, okay.
Back in May or June or something like that.
Yeah, she, she is very, very well-known within, within the MMA community. I think she's been on that select board more than those eight years.
Yeah, she has some interesting, like, war stories from being on that select board, too. If I get a chance to listen to her.
Okay. Yeah, Easton's an interesting town.
Yeah.
A lot bigger than us, too. Um, and, you know, oh, and the town of Wilbraham was sort of the opposite angle. I think I had mentioned that there are some three ter, three-person select boards that do rotate, Wilbraham is one of those. I, I spoke with the chair of the Wilbraham Select Board. They are a three-member board, three-year term, so one each year, and in their bylaws, your first year, your clerk, your second year, your vice chair, your third year, your chair. No organization about it, that's just, it's just how it is. She said there are pros and cons to that, obviously it removes a discussion, but sometimes someone might be a good member and maybe not a good chair. And there's no choice about it, that's just how they do it. So that was, that was the extent of, of what I could find and what council could provide. Um, you know, there are mechanisms, if somebody, I couldn't find anywhere where this is done, but if, if there is a, an officer that is misbehaving, that is not doing their role or something like that, you can remove that person, uh, not from the board, but there's a, you know, that's a, a different process entirely, but you can say, you know, here's cause for, for doing something and, um, you know, and take some action and choose a new person. And of course, if somebody says, hey, I no longer want to be in this role, um, you know, for example, if Laura said, I hate being the clerk, I don't want to be clerk anymore, um, we would then schedule on our next agenda, um, election of a clerk so that that would be filled. But no matter what, we will absolutely positively reorganize, uh, first meeting after the election as we always do. And as I have said, and I will hold true to this, I am, I would be very, very happy if someone else stepped forward at that point. And, um, if I'm lucky enough to return, that, um, I would be very happy if someone else steps forward. I have somebody in mind, that person knows who that is, but we'll, you know, that's, that's for the board to, to sort that out at a later date. So, um, I don't know if anybody has anything else.
Yes, I do.
Of course, feel free.
I do. So in going back to some of the things that you said, um, number one, from our MMA Selectman Handbook, one of the pages that I, I haven't taken any of this stuff out, it's, it recommended that you reorg each year, you change the chair, the chair each year to keep the board whole, to keep the board as a collective group of equality. And when you don't, yeah, and you're losing some of that equality for the other members. Says that right in the MMA handbook.
Okay.
And that's what we heard.
I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but.
I don't have it, but I've, I've made copies of it in the past two years. Um, so then the next thing is, is that in our policies and procedures, the word shall reorganize, shall. Doesn't say maybe, it doesn't say you don't have to, it says shall reorganize.
So, so again, reorganize doesn't mean changing anything, it means taking a vote, and we did that.
The word reorganize does mean change.
It does not. Council was very, very clear.
Well, I, I don't necessarily agree with what council's saying because that's his interpretation of a, of a word that is in the dictionary, all right?
Yeah.
I've seen the dictionary and the dictionary comes up with the word reorganization does mean change. Now, how many years, and Diane, you've been, you've been here for many years.
Little bit.
Have we had in the past, on the chairman of the Board of Selectment, repetitive, consecutive, um, person in the seat?
Maybe once or twice, I don't think.
And how long ago would that have been? Hmm, three people or maybe five?
I can, I can look into that.
Okay.
Yeah, I can look into that. But I do remember when you talk about for, the precedent was kind of the first-year clerk, second-year vice chair, and then chair.
Right.
That was kind of what happened for a number of years.
That was the rotation that we usually did, right? So, um, and because it was already, it was already in these, um, rules and regs that have been on there for quite some time, um, in the past, I'm going to say, I don't even know, because I'm trying to get a, a timeline, how many years? Like, when that happened, since Diane's been here, thirty years? Um, when did that happen and why did that happen? If it was with three people, you can kind of see something like that happening, but that rotation from the last, I'm going to say fifteen years, because those are the mon, a number of years that I've been here, that isn't, that has not happened. Um, and I think that, that prior to this happening last May, that we could have had a discussion about changing that in the policies and procedures. We've never had a discussion about it, we never had a discussion about any of this, but when the time came, um, you appointed Laura two positions and you appointed yourself chair, there was no vote, there was no discussion of vote, it was just.
That was absolutely a vote, first, first meeting after the election was absolutely a vote.
There was no vote because, because Julianne said, I'm not ready, and I'd like to wait for a couple of weeks. We never voted.
I, I thought, I thought we, we aggr, at least agreed that we didn't want to change things because we were in the middle of several interim town administrators, I believe that was.
We made, we made an agreement, but there's, there was no vote taken.
And I believe after the election, we agreed to, lack of a better term, punt the reorganization till like a date in September.
Yeah.
I believe we took a vote on that, or.
We did.
We could check the minutes.
I think we should, yeah, we should check the minutes.
But I believe we did. And if, I don't remember what the outcome was, but it was a majority vote, and that's what happened. Um, right, then we have, you know, Tim decides that, you know, he wanted to move on from being the town administrator. Um, and then when we did have that discussion again, we've, majority voted that we would retain the positions that we had until next town election.
Just, again, there was no vote, there might have been discussion and there might have been.
Both were, I, I mean, we don't have the minutes in front of us.
And I, my recollection was, I believe it was four to one, but let the, I mean, it should be in the minutes.
Yeah.
Whatever that, you know, what, what that vote, so there, so we did take votes, the board did make a majority decision. Um, you know, we may not all agree with, with the board decided, but the board made decisions at, at two points, and I, and I believe in my recollection that there were two votes taken in those two decision points. Um, and, you know, I, I think at this point, to have another reorganization vote where we have a lot of stuff coming up on our plate with, with town meeting coming up, and then we're going to have another election, I, I mean, I, I think it's good that we're having the discussion, especially if, if members, you know, want this on the agenda, want to have the discussion, then, you know, we, we buy all, you know, we, we should. Um, but I'm not, I'm not sure what the next action steps are.
So I was able to quickly pull up meeting minutes. So from our first meeting after the election last year, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, um, Select Board Hirsch, uh, move, SB Hirsch, I don't love that, but that's the way it is, um, move the board, postpone the reorganization till the first meeting of September with the most recent chair and clerk retain, continuing in their positions and the clerk also serving as vice chair until such reorganization, um, voted for, um, four in favor, Lisa voting against.
So that was, that was your motion? That was the, the motion that was given to you?
And then, um, uh, and then in September was a motion was made and seconded to table the reorganization agenda item, uh, three in favor, Lisa opposed, and Julianne abstained. So both were votes. Council reviewed those. If you have an objection to council, put it in writing, they'll take a look. Um, I, I hate to.
KP council quite often, I wanted to change that.
I'd hate to, um, you know, to, to have the expense on this again, where, as Mike said, we're reorganizing in like three months. I don't, I don't understand the issue.
I mean, all in all, this was put off, put off, put off, put off, put off. And I'm, I'm, I am more of a, a law follower than anything else. And in my estimation, when this started, um, it wasn't followed the way the laws were written based on what the.
I can only say council says the laws were followed.
I, well, I, I would.
Again, if you have an objection to that, we shouldn't.
I would contest that.
We should not, then my strong suggestion, put that in writing, send it to Diane, if Steph is still out, Diane can forward that to council and council, um, can provide you a response.
All right. And then there are oversteps that when, when a decision is made or when somebody decides to put something into the newspaper and, and make a, um, report on something, if the board hasn't been asked about it, there's been no discussion before the board, before that happens, I don't understand why that's, how does that collectively bring the board's opinions all together?
Well, even if that did occur, how, how does that pertain to the reorganization process?
It's part of, it's part of what, to Mitch's list of things here.
I mean, you could disagree with how Mitch operates his chair, I mean, that, that's fair, you could disagree with it.
Yes.
But you don't have, then you don't have to vote for him, or, you know, if he was to come up as chair again, or, or.
And I think you made that opinion known by voting against both of those motions.
Okay, well then we don't need to talk about this anymore, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are we good? Moving along, we have some cemetery deeds, is there a motion on four cemetery deeds?
I'm so sorry. Um, did I see them?
Yeah, I had, um, the motions, here.
I've got the motion, but I didn't see the deeds.
Oh.
The deeds weren't in the packet.
Oh, they weren't?
No.
Hmm.
I mean.
Wait, I thought we agreed that they don't have to be in the packet, didn't we?
Do you, do you have them to sign?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so we can.
Yes.
Take a quick look, see if there's anything.
Everything got a little bit, my schedule's a little bit wacky this weekend, so I apologize, it's my fault.
Yeah, I didn't, no, I saw it in the packet.
Thank you.
Again, you, typically the name is redacted on the packet, so please don't read names.
What, thank you. Someone suggest.
I don't, I don't remember that.
Was it Tim who said, why, why do you?
Why do we do this? I, I, yeah, I, I wonder if there's an opportunity to, you know, give Steph the authority or DPW director or somebody just the authority to do this.
Yeah.
Because, you know, even if it's, you know, on an annual basis that we say for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, the town administrator has the authority to do that if council, you know, technically this is kind of like we are selling land and that's our authority, so that's probably why it's there, but.
So you start the signature number seven back.
I think, do we have to vote on them first?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Now that I hold all the deeds.
Can I pick?
I hold all the power.
Hold all the power.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds, one one nine eight, one one nine nine, one two zero zero, one two zero one.
Second.
Motion made by Laura, seconded by Julianne. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Lisa, was that a yes?
Correct.
Yes, okay. Uh, that is unanimous in favor, we have cemetery deeds.
You can, yep.
Yep.
Do we have to sign for the two of us, too?
Yep, okay.
Do you also have the, um, the restriction?
What's that?
The original restriction for us to sign?
Uh, the alcohol permit.
That's in there as well.
Yep.
The alcohol and the.
And the Sumner Street, Sumner Street.
Yeah, the, uh.
Do I need to sign both?
Yep.
Um, reports, um, Mike is signing, so Lisa, any reports tonight?
Um, a couple of reports. Sadly, we are, we have lost Ernie Sawyer. Um, uh, he used to be the Bola Dome. Uh, he died, he was ninety-six years old when he passed on the nineteenth of January. Um, we have a new member in the Board of Appropriations, Terry Halloran, it's nice to make sure we had that filled.
Awesome.
Um, let's see. Looking for volunteers, we are looking for volunteers because we have openings, uh, I don't know if it's been announced, but, um, Carrie Martinique has stepped down from her position on the, um, planning board, and, uh, we miss her, she did a great job, and I would, uh, being the volunteer person all the time, would like to see some more people come forward and, uh, put their hat in the ring and, and help us run the town. in the ring and, and help us run the town. And that's, that concludes my reports.
Okay, Mike, any reports tonight?
Um, yeah, so Community Affairs is going to be having their...
Kindness Week.
The Kindness Week, yeah, sorry, blanking. Yeah, the Kindness Week events coming up in the month of February, so, you know, I know I'm trying to fit in, schedule maybe something on the evenings or, or on a weekend to be able to, to be available for, for, for some of them, as do, you know, encourage everyone on the select board to do that, and, and other department heads will be available, so they're always great events, they're always fun to go to, and so look for more information from the Community Affairs group about that. Kind of mentioned this a little earlier, report from the, from the K through eight school committee about what they intend to put forth as a level services budget with a 3.74 increase, the biggest cost drivers being, what we already mentioned, school bus transportation, reduction in some grant funding, so decrease in those external funding sources coming into the schools, student services, increased demand for student support programs, and curriculum resources, materials and technology and stuff like that are what the, the key budget drivers are from the school committee. Regarding cemetery deeds, from Scott Sharpentier, from the sem, you know, overseeing the Cemetery Commission, he, he had reported that they're looking for applications for a vacancy, which I didn't know if he was like, maybe like threatening me a little bit there, but, I'm just kidding, obviously he wasn't, but, so apparently there's vacancies and, and applications for, for cemetery deeds. Scholarship Committee, update from them, they've, in, in 2024, they awarded out $5,000 to six students, and they were able to raise in an online auction in the fall, raised over about $4,000, and they've been able to award out about $10,100 since 2022. Also, the Youth Commission has a meeting coming up on February the 27th at 7:00 PM, they have four members and they'll be voting on a chair and vice chair at that meeting, so, those are all the, all the reports for now.
Can I ask one question? I was happy you mentioned Kindness Week, are we going to do, like, can this, like, how can we collaborate if other folks on the board want to participate in those? Like, you're going to put out dates, like, I just don't know what the process is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm basically just going to communicate my availability to Suzie Sizilka, and then just kind of see what she's able to schedule, you know, for, for me, because I, you know, mostly work during working hours, you know, except for like early Fridays and weekends, so, you know, maybe she, they can figure out something in the evenings or on weekends, or, you know, for, for me, and I know they're willing to work around everyone's schedule, so, I'm just reporting my availability to her, so...
Got it.
For other board members and department heads, maybe best to just...
Got it.
Work directly through her with what your availability is.
Thank you for clarifying that, I wasn't sure if we were supposed to do it together, or if we could do it individually.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm just doing it individually, so...
That's good.
Let them figure it out.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
Nope, you all set? Okay, any reports?
So, from Master Plan Implementation Committee, I would like to tell everyone that there will be a community outreach meeting to get feedback about the Blake Street Project proposal, and that will be February 26th at 6:30 PM in the large conference room at the library. And just one other thing that people may have been hearing about and reading about is unfortunately, you know, groups of dead birds being found in Marlboro, Plymouth, and I'm not sure if there's any other place, I thought Hudson maybe, but our Health and Human Services Department is, has already put up great information about what to do if you, if you notice this, and information about, you know, the, the, actually, the low risk for humans right now, so look on, look on Isabella's website, it's, it's really impressive, there's information about, you know, what it is, what to watch out for, where to report if there's anything, and I just want to say thank you to them, they did a great job. And I, I just want to mention that the, the profiles of the new staff members on the website is really fun, and some great people, so welcome, and that's it for me.
Laura?
Thank you, so I'm also going to be looking forward to participating in Kindness Week, and I will coordinate with Suzie, I mean, with the Community Affairs. There's some Financial Planning Committee meetings coming up, and you'll have to follow the website just to be sure the dates are consistent, but there's going to be, the School Department, K, ARHS Capital Plan will be on the 30th, February 11th will be the Town Planning Director CPA and Planning Articles, 2/25, at 6:00 PM will be the DPW Director and the DPW and Enterprise Funds, and then March 11th will be the Fire and Police Capital Improvements Projects. And then the last item I'd like to mention again is, thank you so much to Carrie for her service on the planning board, I've really enjoyed working with her, I'm going to miss her, and if there's interested people that would like to fulfill the term that she has through the, till the next election, they can find that on the website, and then there's also the option to run for the full election for the remainder of the term in May. Hopefully I explained that clearly, and that concludes my report.
So I've got a couple of things, I had already mentioned, obviously, I attended the Mass Municipal Association Conference, for anyone that's on the board, next year, please really consider going if at all possible, it's really worthwhile, it is so much fun to talk to other people that do the same thing that we do, that's the best part of it, it's just that informal networking, they have a lot of events, they also have a lot of great sessions, I attended a couple on communications, a really good one on housing, and, and for some reason, my favorite every year is on legal updates, I'm going to go through my notes and maybe for our next meeting, I'll, I'll type up something with some random things that I ran across that might be of interest to others. Couple weeks ago, I attended in Westboro, a select, joint select board and planning board meeting, where they were talking about B-Walt, it was a couple days after we voted support to send a letter, they had a special meeting specifically for that, so I, I attended, it was very well attended, there were probably 100, 120 people in the audience, they, there's, there were a lot of people that are very excited about the trails, which they've already started to work on, there were a few people that are opposed, and we're asking them to, to slow down or stop, I didn't see a lot of that in the audience, but, but two or three had some concerns, some were, some which were very specific as far as where a trail was going to go and things like that, that wouldn't impact us, because we had just sent that letter, I brought a hard copy of that letter with me and presented it to the board and spoke in support of them continuing that process, I said, you know, they're obviously a few years ahead of us, but we're very interested in, you know, in getting it started, and next year hopefully we'll, you know, put in for the feasibility study grant and be able to, to get going. They've done a lot of work, and, you know, our trail systems, we talked about, is probably simpler but more complicated in, in other ways than what Westboro is looking at, but that was really nice to also continue some of the dialogues that I've had, both before the meeting and after the meeting, with some of the Westboro Select Board members that we met when we were at the WUSOC game, and, and one of the planning board members is, is an old friend of my wife, so it was good to see, you know, so, you know, little things that happen when you go spend some time in another town, speaking of Westboro, there is a tour of a relatively new elementary school that they have in Westboro called the Fails Elementary School, it is the first net positive energy school in Massachusetts, so they actually generate more energy from combination of solar and geothermal, and the Westboro Land Trust is doing a tour of that school focusing on the energy production. I, I sent that information out to members of the, the Peaslee Building Committee, because something like that might be of interest, that is this coming Sunday, February 2nd, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, you can get more information at the Westboro Land Trust website, or anyone here can send me a note and I can get you the details, there's no RSVP required for that, and then they're, they're doing a little, you know, walk outside, and I want to echo what has already been said, thank you very much to Carrie Martinick for many excellent years on the planning board, many, many years being chair of that group, which, you know, land use boards can be, in many ways, a lot harder than the work that we do, and she's done a really, really good job with just a steady hand, always kind, always courteous, always very intelligent, moving things forward, and I really appreciate, you know, the fact that, I also appreciate the fact that she timed this resignation such that it would be able to be on the election.
Yeah.
So, there is an appointment process, the process to fill a vacancy of an elected position here is, our board gets together with the remaining members of that board, in this case, the planning board, so four members of the planning board would join us, either at one of our meetings, or a planning board meeting, or some other meeting that we schedule, we then vote as a body, so then there are nine people voting, we would interview applicants, and, and then vote as to who would get appointed, on that's, on the assumption that somebody applies, that person would serve only until the next election, which is this May.
Yep.
So on the ballot, there is going to be a three-year position for Bill Pierce, who's up for reelection, and the two-year remaining term of Carrie's position would also be on the ballot, so anyone who gets appointed would only be, be serving for those short period of time. We have a policy for our regular appointments of advertising for at least two weeks, so I appreciate the office working very closely with the planning office and putting together the ad, which went out this morning, so that in theory, two weeks from tonight, if we want to, if the planning board members were available and we had one or more applicants, we could interview and do applicant, and make an appointment that night. Sooner is better than later, speaking with Amy Poretsky, who's now the acting chair, you know, her concern was that they have some applications that come before them that require a supermajority.
Oh.
So the sooner that we can get that seat filled, the better.
Have there, sorry, have there been any applicants yet?
Well, the ad only went out today, so...
Never mind, that's a late, forget.
Well, sometimes, though.
Yeah, 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 so if you're watching at home, and if you have interest in serving on the planning board for even three months or so, go ahead and, and go to the town website where the link is to the, the application form, and get that in as soon as possible, we'd love to get that, get that dealt with soon.
Was that, that's up Amy, because she's the chairman of the planning board, is the lead on that?
She, well, she's the vice chair, so she's now acting chair, there isn't, it's, it is in our bylaws, or actually the charter, it is a joint responsibility, so Amy and I spoke and we agreed, we both, we both had the same idea that we should advertise this sooner, there, there isn't any lead or, or otherwise, but we would...
Well, we'd call to order, then it's just both boards being called to order at the same time?
Correct, yeah, just like, just like a joint meeting, and depending upon scheduling, you know, it, as I said, it could be our meeting in two weeks, it could be something else, so, once applicant, once we know we have at least an application to think about, each office will contact everybody and see what we can figure out, we don't all have to be here, but it of course is helpful, especially if there's more than one applicant for all nine of us to, to be here, whether it be in the same room or remotely, should be hopefully easy to figure out. That ends my report, Diane, anything tonight?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that we interviewed 27 applicants for the eight safer positions, as well as one vacancy, so we're looking to fill nine positions, and the interview committee was myself, two captains, and Chuck Francian filled in...
Oh, great.
On behalf of the board, he's done it before, so he, he's very familiar with the process, and we moved 14 of them on to meet with the fire chief.
Wow.
So hopefully, yeah, I think March 23rd, they need to be in place, so...
Those must, was it three days, four days?
It was three days, and then another half day, yeah, it was fun, great people.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, really good candidates.
Thank you very much for putting the time into that, and extend that to everybody Are there any future agenda items that anyone wants to discuss, Julianne?
So, we keep putting this off, but I think we have to have a real discussion about where elections take place.
Yes, so, yes, so I sent him, so I didn't know if Steph was in the loop on that, so maybe a week, week and a half, two weeks ago, I don't remember, I sent her a memo...
Okay.
An email, and said, "Hey, by the way, back when this board discussed it, which was a little bit more than a year ago, our decision was, we would hold everything the way that they are through the presidential election, and then afterwards, come back and start to discuss it again." So I gave her the summary of everything and, and, you know, whatever brief facts that I could put together, and suggested that, that she speak with, you know, the key players involved, so town clerk, police chief, school superintendent, to understand some of the concerns pro and con, understanding that, you know, we've heard from, from Andy that there's no easy, there's no simple place that you could just easily move the elections and have them be. One advantage of, of those last couple of elections is we hopefully have some good data on how many people vote either early or by mail, that we know what the overall turnout is, so we can sort of, maybe there's an opportunity there to say, "Hey, maybe we don't, maybe we can somehow figure this out in a space that is smaller than what we thought we needed before."
Yeah.
I don't know that, but that's some good data for them to look at. So I don't know if we have time to change the location for, for the May election, that I will leave that up to the experts to, I don't know how much lead time Andy needs, you know, somewhat depends on where it goes, the senior center comes up now and then, it has some advantages and it has some significant disadvantages, it's a smaller parking lot than Malekin, and there's only one driveway in and out, and so that gives public safety officials some concern, but maybe for a town election, which typically does not have the highest turnout unfortunately, that, you know, maybe, maybe that would work. I don't think there are, there certainly are no other town buildings that have even close to that in parking, Algonquin, you know, certainly has a lot of parking and is a big building, but had, would have the same impact, I suspect, that Malekin would have, you know, sort of a, moving the problem around sort of a thing, other options are splitting the precincts into different places, utilizing non-municipal buildings, which is fine, you know, there's certainly, there's some churches in town that are reasonably large and have pretty good parking, I don't know if they have sufficient parking for all four precincts, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff, but yes, we should come back and, and discuss that, so Steph is in the loop on that.
Okay, I'll follow up with her.
And, you know, I don't know when she will be ready to come back to us, but I imagine we would probably meet with her, with Andy, police chief, and someone from the school department if they want to participate on going through some next steps.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good, thank you for bringing that up. Anybody else have anything else under future agenda items to add? Okay, moving right along, public comment, is there anyone, I can guess there's no one in person in the audience, given that there are no people in our audience, is there anyone remotely that wishes to offer any public comment at this time? Going once, going twice, public comment is closed, I don't think we have anything else, is there any other business to come before the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura, to adjourn, all those in favor, say?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, 10:27 PM, thank you very much, have a lovely evening.